It's five o'clock. So we will go ahead and get started with our meeting. I hope everyone is doing very well. Like to call our meeting to order. And we'll start first with our roll call by our board clerk.
Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page. I know she's having trouble logging in. Valdivia Nguyen.
Valdivia Nguyen, present.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy Yeager, present.
Thank you. While we're waiting for her to come through, I'll go ahead and I'll go through our board norms and protocols. That as a board, we've agreed to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So with that being said, we will now, could I get a motion for us to approve the regular agenda?
Before you do that, Madam President, Wanda still cannot log in because it's not hot. So can Joe resend her the link?
That would be best to do. Mr. Fouts, are you listening?
Yes, I'm getting ready to send that to her right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he said he's getting ready to send it to you right.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I make a motion that we approve the regular agenda.
I need a second there, please. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair, before, I just wanted to acknowledge the, that we've been receiving several emails and communication around the literacy program in the district and just want to acknowledge that and that maybe we should have a conversation on that at some point. I don't think that tonight's agenda would be appropriate since I don't know that staff is ready to do that, but just wanted to acknowledge the communication.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to make a motion that we put that on Saturday's agenda since we're having a short meeting on Saturday, the 17th, 16th, and have a discussion on the literacy issue with the emails and other information that staff will be able to provide us with.
Okay.
Technically, you've got a motion on the floor, so we're going to make the motion or deal with the motion.
Okay.
Make a secondary motion to do that, that'd be fine.
Okay.
So it has already been moved. I need someone to second it, please.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Susan, would you do the roll call vote for approval, please?
Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Still not on there.
We can hear her.
Okay. Did you call my name?
No, Valdivia Nguyen.
As you hear, Wanda Brownlee Page says she still can't get in. He hasn't sent it to her. But I say yes to approve the agenda.
Okay. And Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now we have.
She said she didn't get it, I know.
Now we have an additional motion for Randy Lopez. Would you please repeat it or Janie?
I moved that we add to Saturday, the 16th agenda, a discussion on the targeted literacy.
I need that to be seconded.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made that we move the target literacy plan discussion for Saturday, May 16th on our agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you. Susan, would you do the roll call vote?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page, are you there yet? Valdivia Nguyen.
Did you hear that, Mr. Fouts? He doesn't have it yet.
Dr. Nguyen, it might be good if.
Yes, it has been sent.
And then let us hear her responses. If you put on your phone.
What?
If you could bring up the speaker on your phone so she starts talking.
Okay.
Until she gets on, then if we need her to vote, she will be able to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so let's go ahead and move further with our community comment.
I haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Valdivia Nguyen.
She's on mute.
Dr. Nguyen, you need to vote.
I'm sorry, what are we voting on, please?
Just Saturday agenda.
Oh, yes.
Amendment.
Yes.
And Stacy Yeager.
Yes.
Did you need Ms. Brownlee Page?
Yes.
Ms. Brownlee Page, they're asking you to vote yea or nay on Saturday, having the discussion of literacy, a target literacy with that Saturday meeting. Yes or no?
Yes.
Did you hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much. We're learning. We'll get there. Thank you, board members. So now we are ready to go to our community comment and we have several, and so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Westfall to let her go ahead and get started and then everyone else will go ahead and read accordingly.
Okay, several of the board members have neglected or have elected to help read. So the first one will be Randy Lopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Susan. So the first one, do I need to, I guess I should have asked ahead of time, did I just start reading? Do you need their name?
You can just give their name.
Yeah, you have the name so we know who the person making the comment is.
Got it, thank you. So a comment from Sally Murgia, submitted by Sally Murgia. Mrs. Westfall, we would like to submit the following statement for public comment for the next Board of Education meeting. Yours truly, Sally and Ramon Murgia. With the school buildings closed, every school is working directly with parents and students to provide distance learning during this coronavirus pandemic. Teamwork between educators and parents and students is even more important than ever. We are saddened that Mr. Jerome Bruggerman will, Jeremy Bruggerman, will not be returning as principal of Argentine Middle School next year. He has provided years of conscientious and quality leadership and we are disappointed and frustrated by the district's process and decisions in choosing a successor for Mr. B. We are concerned about the process. We are concerned about the priorities in the HR department. We are concerned about the result for our students. We are concerned about the future of our schools. The last thing our students and their families need in this time of global pandemic and economic insecurity is more disruption, especially if such disruption is avoidable. Eliana Farni applied to succeed Mr. Bruggerman. She is currently an assistant principal at Argentine. She is a respected, longstanding member of the education community working in our neighborhood. Though there may indeed be other viable candidates, we breathe the sigh of relief because she would make an excellent principal. She knows the community. She would provide continuity of leadership having worked with the outgoing principal for years. She is bilingual, Latina, and over 60% of the students at the school are Latino. This candidate has spent years building programs and strategies to stimulate cooperation and mutual respect between the school and the families it serves. The district HR department responded to her application by not only passing it over, but doing so without an interview and with a tertiary assignment to a different school in the district. Why? This reassignment can't be just to save money. Even if she's working in another school, this school in the district, they're still going to be paying her the salary she earned through decades of committed service, first as an educator, then an educator with a master's degree, then an administrator, then an administrator working on her doctoral thesis. It seems like punishment for having applied to be a principal. Meeting the state's requirement for accreditation of public schools should be a priority. Dr. Faust's focus on test scores has been amused, but in Kansas accreditation includes five areas of review based on the school accreditation model called Kansas Education System Accreditation, KISA. If you look at the areas of foundational structures and stakeholder involvement and participation, there are specific rubrics which give their highest ratings for things like engaging all stakeholders and embedding that in the overall culture and things like representing all student groups' needs in the improvement process and things like involving our relevant stakeholder groups, for example, students, parents, community, business, et cetera, as active participants providing input to the system regarding KISA. Under Mr. Bruggerman's leadership, Argentine Middle School has maintained an active site council, bringing the faculty, parents, and community together. It has ongoing partnerships with multiple employers in the region. It has developed a bridge to Argentine program that connects rising sixth graders and their parents to the school, and it has several active parent engagement programs, including Padres Comprometidos and Watch Dogs. Mrs. Farni has been a driving force in creating this culture of involvement. So how does her reassignment to another school, never mind declining the opportunity for smooth change in the principal's office, help the district meet these rubrics for accreditation? At its retreat on February 22nd, the Board of Education was encouraged to go beyond the requirements for accreditation and aim for schools that provide positive, quote, "positive relational experiences." Who could disagree with that? Argentine Middle School has been proactively innovating and implementing ways to build positive relational experiences, and the leadership making that happen is going to be gone. What is Dr. Faust, who leads this administration, aiming to accomplish? We continue to be disappointed by the actions of this administration and failing to consider local community voices in decisions regarding their schools. At every point, we find this administration undermining true community cooperation and partnership. So what end, Dr. Faust? And then we have the next community submission coming from Rachel Russell. Good afternoon, Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education members and administration. My name is Rachel Russell and I currently reside in the Harmon Cluster. I have two school-aged children that attend Frank Rushton and Sumner Academy. I'm writing you today to inform you of my extreme gratitude for the teachers, staff, and school administration that has quickly adapted to what we now know as distance learning. I know that this was and still is no simple task and I believe that you all did everything while putting your best foot forward and adapting as you went. Hats off to you all. I also want to inform you of my personal discontentment with the disorganization of communication and transparency within the district. As you see, I didn't utilize the word "lack" because I believe we have the technology to be successful in the area of communication with our families and students. However, the key is utilizing those tools correctly. I receive roughly 20 emails, texts, and robocalls from the district, my children's schools and the teachers/administration each week. And let me tell you that about one-third of them are misinformation or information that does not apply to my family. This is a massive overload of information which would lead one to no longer subscribe or read information in its entirety when sent. I am frustrated with this and I can only imagine the frustration of others. I would like to see our district staff that utilize Infinite Campus and Bright Arrow to become equipped with the skills to be able to filter to whom and how many of each requests are sent to parents weekly. There is no reason with the expansive technology that you all have invested and that you all have invested in, you cannot figure out how to filter to whom requests are sent and the misinformation messages have got to end. They lead to pure confusion. My last comment spoke specifically to external electronic communication, but my next comments will speak to general school community communications. I have been to many in-person and electronic board meetings and it is mentioned numerous times that students and families are of the most importance in building a strong, community-supported, public education system within our district. However, those parties tend to be the individuals not invited to the table during initial discussions, actions, and when decisions are being made regarding their students. I am, however, very grateful that there is now representation of current parents in the district on our board. Speaking directly to the 2020 graduation arrangements, it has been stated that a small group of students from each school were a part of the process in deciding the plan for graduation. Does it not make sense that the same methodology used in sending mass district emails, texts, phone calls that were used to send me information or survey me about the meal pickup times not be utilized to survey all seniors and their families at all of our schools prior to making said decision? Instead, we allowed a small group of folks to make a monumental decision for its entire, for its entire class body across the entire district. This is not a first-time occurrence of this behavior for the district. It's a habitual behavior that leads to a bad taste in the community's mouth, open and closed-door discussions and meetings, and to be completely honest, complete distrust in the district's ability or willingness to allow their families and students to have a voice at the table. Now, I'm not saying that every decision should come before the community, but as you have seen in the backlash, folks are not happy with the graduation arrangements. There is a lot of confusion, misinformation being shared, and folks feeling like they were backed into a corner and just had to go with what has been decided. As you all know, graduation of any sort in Black and Brown communities where preschool, high school, or college are life-changing events. And for those events to be limited to one vehicle, no stage presence, and in a part of town where the buses don't even run is not a representation of what our community truly desires. The 2020 graduation plan should include, at the least, senior board voices walking across the stage and family. There is a notion that folks will be headed off to college by July, but as you've seen in recent news stories, colleges are also making plans to begin their fall semesters later by extending the summer break period due to COVID-19. In closing, I'm asking you to take the information that I have provided to you and continue to make decisions that meet the needs of our community in an equitable and efficient way, as well as follows families, as well as allow families and students in numbers to have a voice at the table, not cherry-picked, not pre-selected, but as their authentic selves to have a voice at the table, to continue to do right by their kids, their families, and our district. Thank you.
And next is Angie Tollfree. Hello, I'm submitting a petition to you to go on the board meeting for next week. All we're asking is that our kids have a better graduation ceremony. I have over 1,000 signatures and some responses that will be attached to share with the board. We are prepared to have families sign a waiver form stating that the Board of Education isn't responsible for anyone who may get sick at the ceremony. We are prepared to have five to six guests per seniors. We are prepared to wear face masks. We are prepared to take off sections in the stadiums to have, to keep a safe six-feet distance. We are prepared for whatever will be needed to have a safe graduation for the class of 2020. Some suggestions for a better ceremony would be, one, have it at each school stadium and limit the people. Two, have a drive-through at each school with staff lined on each side to hand out diplomas and cheer the seniors on. All guests shall remain in the car while the seniors get out. Three, have two to three persons plus senior in the auditorium. Four, make a stage at the drive-in and let the seniors walk while guests remain in the cars. All we're asking is that other options be considered before taking all the excitement away from seniors. Our hopes are that through the administration and Board of Health, we can push back the graduation and have it at a later date because many students and parents feel even if we have it later on, that's still sufficient compared to not having it at all. There's some students, the first in their generation to graduate, or they're not going to college. So this is their one chance to show off their hard work to their families. Every student deserves the right to say goodbye to the place and people that have shaped the last four years of their life. Next, Shayna Rainey. I am writing to you as a mother of a graduate of 2020 senior from Slako High School. First, I would like to thank Kansas City, Kansas District for finding some sort of venue to allow our students to graduate in some form or fashion during this pandemic. On that note, I'm proposing some minor changes to be considered for the graduation plan at the Boulevard Drive-In. I note that seniors would like to walk and receive a diploma. Can some sort of stage or platform be made in front of the big screen at the drive-in and each senior can walk across it in their cap and gown and be handed their diploma? Every senior can be spaced six feet apart while waiting in line and all other family members, friends, et cetera, are not allowed out of the cars. Names and pictures of the seniors can be announced on the speakers and shown on the screen as they walk across, as they walk the stage. Looking at social media and reading many comments from various peoples, it sounds as if students and family are not happy with just seeing their graduates across the drive-in screen. I write this to you and hope that you can read it at the upcoming board meeting on May 12th. I appreciate all of your help in this matter. And again, I applaud the district for coming up with something for our graduates during this rough time. Best regards, Shayna Rainey.
And now we have Janie Humphries.
My communication is from F. Don Huron. Hello, I was asked to let you know about how I feel regarding KCKPS graduation decision. My graduate will be the last of my family to accomplish this goal. We, as a family, made all the meetings/activities to get extra tickets so that her family members from out of state could attend her graduation. This pandemic is out of our control, but couldn't you all come up with something other than drive-in? What about families that are separated? Only one carload? Then you say no one out of the car? Some grads will be going on with their lives. This could be the last time they interact. Have you considered the old sandstone amphitheater? That could hold more than drive-in or even pushing back the date? These kids work so hard to get to this day, to only get a screenshot. This may be the biggest accomplishments for some. Make it the best, please, and thanks.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Okay, so my communication is coming from Hope Freeman. My name is Hope Freeman and I am concerned about the graduation plans for 2020. I, as a student, don't like the one, one car-per-graduate scenario. My mom and dad are separated and really, and I really want my mom to come. How are we going to let students who have separate parents into the one-car-per-graduate in graduation? Can we fix this? Can we please fix this so my mom can see me graduate? Thanks, Hope. And the next letter is from Connie Davis. I'm writing this letter in hopes of reconsideration of the senior class of 2020 traditional ceremony. I am truly aware of the coronavirus and am hoping that consideration is given regarding this matter. I am a cancer patient and my husband is 65 years old, which we both have underlying conditions. We raised our grandson and made many sacrifices for him, whom is a senior this year. As I stated, we have underlying conditions. Our daughter, who is a nurse, has been a part of his life as well. She also works in a nursing facility that has confirmed cases of coronavirus. Now, if you put just her alone in the car with him and us, not to mention other family, what do you think could affect us, especially my husband and I? This drive-in ceremony has put us in harm's way because we can't distance ourselves. At least if this ceremony is delayed and more thought can be put into this matter, there could be a better solution. I heard on the news the other night that none of the surrounding districts were doing, were going for this with their students. It's like District 500 is doing anything just to say they had a ceremony. Our districts, other districts are delaying and trying to come up with something momentous. Some students are even recognizing their seniors by putting a sign in their yards until they can figure it out, figure out something, I'm sorry. District 500 need to do better instead of just throwing something out there. These students is already missing out on the things seniors normally do and you guys are not giving, and you guys are not going to take some time to come up with something better than a drive-in movie. What about all the money the parents have spent on senior responsibilities, including cap and gown they can't wear? Y'all need to think about when y'all graduated and how you felt during this time. Also, the parents should be involved in the decision-making, not just the students. They could have a ceremony outside even if it required a longer ceremony. Have more than one ceremony in a day. There's all kinds of ways that could be, that could have, there's all kinds of ways they could have a ceremony that is close to a traditional one if y'all would not be so fast to just have anything that could bring more harm than good. My grandson, along with other seniors, have worked hard for this momentum. I believe that more thought and suggestions from parents should have, should take place so seniors can have a traditional ceremony. This is a big moment for them. Thank you. From grandparents with underlying conditions that made a sacrifice for their grandson.
Okay. This comment is from Lupe Rojas. My name is Lupe Rojas and I'm a parent of a graduating senior from J.C. Harmon High School. I would like to voice my concerns about the graduation celebration that the USD 500 School District has planned. My daughter, as well as the other graduating seniors in the district, have worked too hard throughout their 12 years of schooling to have it commemorated in this way. My daughter earned a spot in the top 10% of her class and she is a diploma-plus student. She has worked hard to earn top grades and earned college credit while in high school. She has looked forward to this day when she could walk across the stage and receive her diploma honoring her achievements. I understand that the circumstances we're in are putting everyone in very difficult situations where compromises have to be made, but I have seen that other high schools and surrounding districts have decided to postpone their graduation ceremonies until late July. Many parents and seniors in our district would like the possibility of having a similar graduation plan. I also saw in the post made by the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools Facebook page that a group of seniors were asked about graduation and they voiced concerns that some of them will be gone for college in late July. But my student has not, was not a part of that discussion and many parents said that their students wasn't asked either. So the decision could not have included the majority of the seniors in our district. There's also the fact that parents paid money for a cap and gown, graduation announcements, among other things, to celebrate our seniors graduating. Without a proper ceremony with a stage for our students to walk across, these items aren't put to use. As a parent, I would like to see that the majority of the seniors in this district would be considered instead of just a small group that was surveyed. I think a postponed ceremony should be considered and a video celebration used as a backup plan if the circumstances still require us to be taking safety measures such as social distancing into late July. Thank you, Lupe Rojas. The next comment is from Kendon McLean. Please explain the process that was taken to determine graduation plans for this year. Neighboring districts ask students and parents to take polls or vote. It's been said that our district reached out to several students for guidance. What questions were posed? What questions were posed to these students? Were they asked to pick one or the other between the driving graduation or virtual? The lack of transparency and thoroughness for this leaves a lot to be desired and more to be disappointed in. What does it say to our students when neighboring districts that were dealt the same hand as ours are being told that this is the best we can do? When we see better processes and plans have been put together? We ask our students to do their best, try hard, give it their all. That's not what's being done for them for our graduation or for their graduation. I am imploring the board, our superintendent, and any decision-makers to revisit this. Reach out to other districts and ask what steps they took. You only fail if you don't try. If we plan for a physical graduation and it turns out it can't be done, at least we can say to the kids and they'll know that we tried our best. Process and effort giving, given to this will set the tone for the next situation we find ourselves in that we've never had before. Kendon McCain, parent of a Washington High School senior. Next is from Tanisha Davis. I'm writing regards to my child who is a senior at Schlegel High School. I understand that we are all expect, experiencing a difficult time due to COVID-19. My concerns are the ceremonial celebration given to the students to take place at the Boulevard Drive-In. I don't think that it's fair to the students who have worked so hard for 18 years to be sitting in a car and see their pictures. That's not good enough. There are other districts in Kansas and the Kansas City Metro are, who have done things to make this occasion for students. We had, have worked hard as parents to see our child walk across the stage. That is an honor and a privilege for them and it has been taken away. That's not creative nor is it special. Money has been spent, long nights have been spent to make sure we have gotten to this point in their life. These kids deserve a chance, excuse me, to mark this occasion in their memories. Their families also deserve this, just like you say, one child, one car. Well, I for myself, I for myself had a very strong support system to help raise my child because it takes a village to raise a child and that's also taking this away from family who helped and waited to see this child achieve a moment that maybe offers, others never experienced. I urge you as a board to rethink this decision. I will not attend and nor will my child because it's not a point of wasting gas to see a picture on a screen. I can do that at home. Sincerely, Tanisha Davis. And the last one is from Latoria Campbell. I'm a senior at Wyandotte High School and it's come to my attention that the student council has chosen the setting for our graduation. Honestly, this is unfair. We have 275 to 280 seniors and there was no vote between all of us, just a few. I did not attend school 12 years for this. All of those wasteful nights of studying, those wasteful nights of staying past bedtime to finish a due assignment and being stressed about difficult assignments or being awarded a drive-in slideshow. We're already upset that we're not receiving a prom, but our graduation ceremony wasn't even a fair vote between all seniors. I hope that the board considers asking seniors what we want. This was supposed to be our year, our night, and our memorable event. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Next senior, you're on mute. You have to unmute yourself.
Thank you. We'd like to thank each of our board members for sharing the thoughts of those within our community. And we thank the community who did send those letters, sending them to us so that we can hear their opinion of what is being done within the district. We are now ready for our graduation, for our board update, starting with graduation 2020 update.
Hello, thank you. I'm Sherita Hutton, Director of Communications, and I'm going to try to share my screen real quick with everyone. Can you see that?
Yes.
As, as many of you know, over the past few weeks, we have been working very hard for our KC KPS seniors. Of course, this graduation does not seem traditional by any means, but we want them to all know that we are celebrating every one of them, especially during these trying times, trying to keep them safe. So before I get started with the complete update, I believe Elizabeth Morris is with us and I would like her to read a letter from the Health Department that was recently addressed to our school and also to you, the board.
I will now read a letter from Dr. Alan Greiner, who is the Health Officer for the Unified Government Public Health Department. Members of the Board of Education, I want to congratulate KC KPS students, the Board of Education, and the administration for working together to devise a relatively safe method to host graduation ceremonies for high school seniors during these challenging times. The coronavirus outbreak has triggered increased anxiety in many communities throughout our nation. However, I am grateful for the way our community has responded on a collective front to educate and mitigate, mitigate the spread of COVID-19. KC KPS plays a vital role in this ongoing effort to keep students, parents, and staff informed as we can continue to try and flatten the curve in Wyandotte County. I want to give my support to the school district's effort to host six graduation ceremonies at the Boulevard Drive-In in June under the restrictions they proposed to ensure that all participants follow the health and safety guidelines established to prevent the spread of COVID-19. KC KPS agreed to establish additional measures during the event to ensure that everyone follows social distancing measures at all times. There will be no face-to-face gatherings of people. The district is expected to ensure these rules and guidelines are enforced on the site. Only one vehicle per graduate. No one exits from the vehicle. Vehicles should not be filled with more than the legal number of passengers. Remember, we are not out of the woods yet as it relates to the spread of COVID-19. All eyes are on KC KPS for their positive and innovative approach to, approach to ensure students finish the year on a positive and memorable note despite the cloud of uncertainty caused by this pandemic. We must take personal, we must all take personal precautions and responsibility for doing our part to slow down the rise of cases we have seen in Wyandotte County. Let us all make sure we leave this event with a positive and memorable experience by ensuring everyone follows the rules established by your local health agency and KC KPS. Remember, personal hygiene is extremely important. Wear a cloth or paper mask as much as possible in public. Make sure you cover your sneeze or cough, wash or sanitize your hands frequently and avoid touching your face. Follow the six feet social distancing protocol and if you feel ill, stay home. Thank you for your cooperation in this matter and for helping us protect the public's health. Sincerely, Kay Allen Greiner, MD, MPH, Health Officer, Unified Government, Public Health Department.
Elizabeth, thank you so much. So here we are, as far as our dates for graduation. We have plans to start graduation, starting on June 1st with our alternative schools being combined. And then all of the schools have notified not only their seniors, but also their families of the dates and times for each of these graduations. We have also met with the Boulevard discussing some rain dates in case those are needed. So what will happen is if it is Tuesday, June 2nd and it's J.C. Harmon and there is a downpour, they would move to the 10th. That way, no other school will have to make any adjustments and they would stick with their plan. Over the last week or the last few days, we have also started to survey some of our seniors to ask them what they would like to see in their graduation program. Everybody had their, their ideas into us by noon today. Their suggestions were around who would they like to see their speech live? Would it be the auditorium? Would it be the principal? What would that closing song before they drove away? What would that song be? And if they could elect a teacher that really impacted them through their days in high school to speak to them, who would that teacher be? So we are compiling all of that data now. We will build all of the programs around the suggestions that we received from the seniors over the last couple of days. Not only that, as many know that we are looking at some additional support when it comes to graduation. So those families who may not be able to make it to graduation would still be able to watch it. So since much of it will be pre-recorded, we're looking at ways to possibly upload that onto Facebook and then also using our channel and we could discuss a little bit more about that Plan B, since it will be recorded. The fact that we could move the entire program to just virtual. Chief Horn, would you be able to step in now and kind of update us on where we are when it comes to safety?
Thank you, Sherita. The Police Department for the school district is looking at a three-tiered approach for looking at traffic, parking, and the event safety part of this. The most important part of this is the, what the parameters that Dr. Greiner has pointed out in the event that we have, we have capacity about 1,400 guests and that's estimating four per vehicle. And that's a slight estimate. We have to have a number, so we have to put something together. That's roughly 350 vehicles and then we have some room for some transportation that's provided by the district and our VIP and event guest, which is very low in numbers. Primarily, we are looking at ingress and egress. We are working in a collaborative effort with Kansas City, Kansas Police Department. They'll just very, very much just be monitoring the situation with us. We'll also have a fire ambulance on scene like we do at our activities, like at a football game. That's fully ALS support and that's Advanced Life Safety Systems. The rest of that is collectively by all of our personnel and we hope that we'll be able to provide a very safe environment for our guests coming and going and make this event that will at least be memorable to, given the different situation that we're involved in right now.
Thank you, Chief Horn. As we know that not everyone is happy with the graduation plans, I do want to point out what we are seeing, especially when the announcement came out and still seeing over some of our social media platforms, excuse me, as we started to present this. As you can see from the numbers, this is just pulled from our Facebook page when we initially announced the plans for graduation. The number of likes and loves for support of something like this, something, of course, not traditional, but thoughtful. And then these are just some of the comments that we pulled from that page. There were numerous ones of them. We, of course, blocked out some of the names. But just, you know, so happy to hear, so glad our district has kept our seniors at heart. Yes, our, our students deserve recognition. We are seeing this time and time again. We have also received calls from other districts asking how are we doing this? Hoping to take some of these ideas and maybe implement them in their district as the days have gone on. And of course, you know that a lot of media has started to reach out, talking about how are we going to make this possible? And how unique this whole situation is and how special this could be for our seniors. So at this time, Principal Yolanda Thompson from Schlegel is also on the line. Ms. Thompson, are you there?
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. I'm going to say that as Principal Schlegel, I have not received any negative reports at all. We did a survey with our students and families last week and at one time, 85% of them said they would attend. The next time, 91% of them said they would attend the graduation. The one thing that they want is they want it livestreamed for those family members who are not able to be there so that they can watch it. Parents have also suggested, you know, if they could get a copy of that, but I have not received. Neither I or my administrative staff have received any complaints about the graduation being held at the grad, at the drive-in. We're excited about it. We tell them to think outside of the box and this is an out-of-the-box way of doing things. And this week, we had Schlegel Alumni Association reach out to ask how they can support and help to even make it more special.
Thank you so much. And then Principal Malone from Seminole, are you also on?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Dr. Passan Board. Similar to what Ms. Thompson said, you know, first I have to say Sherita and her team, I'm, I'm so appreciative of all the work that they've done. Every time they kind of come to us and give us an update, it's always a little bigger and a little better than it was even the week prior. But just like Ms. Thompson said, as soon as we rolled it out, the first we rolled it out just with, after the initial announcement that came from KC KPS before we had our, our date nailed down. Lots of positive feedback on our social media, the comments on our posts in our own Twitter handles, everything, lots of likes, lots of positivity. As well as talking to students and staff, I was real appreciative of, of just honoring them. Having the students have a ceremony to honor their, their year. And so I think they were just happy and they really liked the drive-in because I think they feel like it's going to be a very unique event that they'll remember. And I think if we can really determine a way to kind of stream that, like Ms. Thompson said, for those families that can't be there, then, then we're going to win over a lot of our crowds. Additionally, we have kind of our, our virtual office hour set up. No one's come in with any kind of comments or concerns, as well as our virtual phone number that was listed on the invitation that went out to all of our families. We've got zero concerns or complaint messages left on that phone number as well. So as far as for Seminole Academy and our graduates, it's nothing but positivity around our June 4th graduation day.
Thank you, Principal Malone. And that is the conclusion of the update for graduation. Any questions?
I have none. Anyone, any other board members?
I want to say thank you so much, Sherita, for all that you've done. You're doing an excellent job with communicating, putting up the phone number for people to reach out if they have inquiries. So I was wondering, would it be feasible to maybe get the pulse and send out a, a survey to our seniors just to give reinforcement of support for this event? Because, you know, we do have that petition and people have written in, would it be possible for you to send, or schools? Because Ms. Thompson said that she sent a survey out to all of her seniors. Would it be possible to survey all the seniors to ask them or do a survey to get their feedback? To ensure the board knows that the, and help the community as well as our seniors be able to give feedback? Now, I know that wouldn't be parent feedback, but hopefully students would talk to their parents concerning what their vote would be. You know, if it would be, you know, great, forge on with our June date, yay, push it back or possibly virtual. You know, possibly to get three options for them to give us that additional feedback.
Dr. Jaeger, the, the answer is yes. We could, we could definitely set up a survey and get a pulse as to what all of the seniors want. I think if we do something like this, we probably need to use Plan A as the drive-in and plan to go with those June dates that we have talked about. Then Plan B, of course, would then be moving this further back into July with the understanding that if our cases continue to rise, and this is, of course, the disappointing part of what could possibly happen. Pushing that back and keep pushing it back might mean that these kids only get a virtual graduation. So we will, we just need to make sure that we make that very clear. But yes, the answer is yes, we can, we can send out a survey starting tomorrow.
Thank you. I just think it's an excellent job and all of the work that you all have done. And we're trying to make sure that we are going to satisfy everybody. But there has to be some major decisions that have to be made in order for us to be able to make sure that we recognize how important this graduation for 2020 is. So again, I'd just like to say thank you for the hard work that you all are doing. And just ask the community at large to help support. And I think if we should show unity, we'll stay strong. Thank you.
Excuse me, I, I was muted, but I have a few questions. One, when we met the last time and voted on this, and I just wanted on the record, I didn't vote for this. That's just my opinion. I'm putting it out there. But when I asked about the Health Department and Mr. Alan Greiner, as she gave her report today, said, I thought I heard them say they wouldn't be getting out the car, but when we had the last meeting, we were told that there would be porta-potties of some sort for, that sit on a flat bed. Is that still available for people? Because I don't know if you were here when they read the letters, there were some health concerns and people were worried. But I heard in the letter from Greiner saying that they need to stay in the car, but we were told that they would have an option to get out the car. So what is it? Are they in or are they out?
So on the invitation, it, it states no restrooms are available. But we have to also be realistic. What if there was an emergency of any type that somebody had to use a restroom? So we have to have something on-site in case of an emergency. The restrooms that are currently on that facility cannot be used since the gentleman who owns it is 93 years old. He does live on the site. We can't jeopardize his health. So that is why we will bring those porta-potties in, in case of an emergency. But once again, this goes back to, nobody should be getting out of their vehicle, but we do have to have an option there.
Okay, well, I would just remember when we had the meeting, we were told. we were told they, they were going to be able to get out. And then we hear the doctor say, no, you shouldn't be getting out. So don't want to confuse anybody, but we want to be clear. And then my other question is, looking at the, the plan that our governor put together, it said no graduations. So are we clear on that? Is she okay with that? So what's going on?
So we are technically, our dates would have us in Phase Three, if you look at her timeframe, which would allow for graduations. We are also erring on this side of safety because, and Elizabeth, I'm going to probably quote these numbers wrong. You know, people want to compare our district with what other districts are doing, but our county alone is very different than all the other counties. I think earlier Elizabeth was stating that we're at a twenty-four percent rate when Johnson County's at a seven percent. So we have to be very careful when we're talking about graduation within the district and keeping these families safe, because it's not just about our seniors. It's about their moms, their dads, their grandparents. And that's why we wanted something special. We want something special for them. But we want to make sure that everybody's going to be safe doing so.
This is Valdina Nguyen. Thank you. Please explain me what you're seeing rate between Wyandotte and Johnson, because right now Wyandotte has one thousand plus confirmed cases. And then secondly, what are the dates of the other surrounding schools? Thank you.
I'm going to have Elizabeth. Elizabeth, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
I probably quoted your rates wrong, so you're probably laughing at me. Can you jump in and tell me what the numbers are again?
Sure. So on the Wyandotte County COVID-19 hub, you are correct. The confirmed number of cases are one thousand eighty-three. It also says that the percent of people tested who have tested positive is twenty-two percent. And I, I don't have like the exact number, but this is what's been spoken by Dr. Greiner, is that Johnson County, their test positive rate is closer to seven percent because they have different health concerns in that county than we do here in Wyandotte. And so that's some of the reason why our restrictions in Wyandotte County have been much more strict than in Johnson County and some of the surrounding counties in Missouri, is because our population, because of the health inequities, are at a greater risk.
Thank you, Elizabeth. And so you're asking the second part of your question?
Well, that's exactly the point I was making. And so with even that in mind, what are the other dates at the surrounding districts? I voted no because I'm still concerned about weapons. And so that, full transparency, I want to make that clear.
So just quickly, kind of glancing over, all of the dates that I've seen for like in Alatha, Shawnee Mission, Blue Valley puts those dates at the end of July. Alatha looks like they're about the twenty-four through the twenty-six. I believe Shawnee Mission comes in around that same timeframe when it comes to graduation. Many of them have said that they will do a graduation maybe at a stadium where somebody can walk the stage, but also with that line written in there that if things change, they will move to virtual.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Yolanda. The one car, have we gone back and reevaluated the, the one car per family situation? Because as stated by our community, we do have several families that are, parent, mom, and dad are not together. So have we gone back and looked to see what could be done there?
We have been working on that for the last few days with the principals. We initially set up a hotline at each one of the schools for those students that needed assistance with transportation. And those are the students that we were going to offer a bus to, so one family per school bus. Then on Thursday or Friday of last week, we then went back and said, if you have transportation concerns, that you can also call this number. So we have been taking a poll of which students actually would possibly need two vehicles. So they are maybe one of those divorced households would need another vehicle for a mom or a dad. The problem's going to be in what we are really trying to be very careful of is even though that there are seven hundred parking spots out there at the drive-in, some of our schools are running at two hundred and eighty students. So we will be very close to getting to maximum capacity when we're thinking about safety, because we're going every other spot to make sure that we're still in that six-foot of distancing.
Okay. And, and I hear what you're saying about the buses. And I, I know we want to make sure that we're using those maybe for the students that are really at, you know, really fall within the, the category of, I really truly don't have transportation versus I have to use this as my transportation because the one car limit has already gone to this other household. So I hear what you're saying. I just, I just want to say families may not really consider the bus to be an option if they have vehicles to get there. Am I making sense?
Yes. No, no, no. The bus is only for those people without transportation. The phone number is also set up for those people with transportation concerns, meaning that they may, I believe the girl's name was Hope Freeman. We read her letter earlier on. So she talked about the fact that, you know, she wanted her mom to be there. Washington High School actually reached out to her today to discuss the fact that there might need to be another vehicle in her case. So we are taking a tally. We've also run some reports about who's listed as maybe a mom and dad not living in the same household. So we could try to figure out, can we fit another vehicle in for some of these families that will need it?
Okay.
And so be very mindful of the restrictions that are there.
So if I'm a senior and I'm listening today, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but just, I mean, I'm listening today, and that's one of my questions. Who do I talk to? Who do I make sure knows my concerns when it comes to that?
So every single school has an individual phone number that was sent out to them on their reservation list or on their flyer. They also received additional information with a reminder of that phone number just last week. And then today, if you go to any of our social media handles, you'll see the phone number listed for every single high school when it comes to transportation concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Again, like to say thank you. We're now ready to go to our next board updates with the KASB presentation on Board Self-Evaluation Community Satisfaction Survey.
Hello, everybody. I want to introduce to you Dr. Jordan. He's from KASB. And we had talked about the self-evaluation as well as community survey. And the board asked him to come expound a little more, so he is here joining us. And he's going to give us an overview with the presentation to talk to us a little more about those areas. Dr. Jordan, over to you.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Yeager. So I'm going to share my screen with you all, and I believe you all have this document in, in the board docs. This is just an overview of our board self-assessment process. And I, I'd first like to start off and just commend you all for taking the steps and time to consider doing a board self-evaluation. It's a step that, that not, not a lot of boards take because it, it causes some self-reflection. It causes you to maybe take some hard looks at, at how you're functioning. And that's actually the benefit or a positive from taking the time to do one of these board self-assessments. So we encourage boards to, to go into this process and take it seriously and try to weave it into some of your, your annual events or things that you're doing to try to continue to improve yourselves as a board of education. So the document that I shared with you and that you see on the screen kind of goes through and talks a little bit about the, the underlying purposes behind the board self-evaluation. As you go through this process, the self-evaluation itself has, I believe, six different areas that really focus in on the governance of the board and the leadership that the boards are providing, along with the relationship that you're trying to establish with your superintendent. So the first per, first underlying reason for doing this is it helps to clarify your purpose. Why are we here? Another piece of this is it's going to help you identify where you're, where you're strong. And then it's going to help you identify other areas that you maybe need to establish some priorities within to try to work to get better at. And what I mean by that, for example, we've done this with several districts over the years. And, and one area that comes up frequently is maybe a little bit of a misalignment between policy adopted and district direction and vision. So that's an area that they want to really work on over the course of a year to try to make sure that they have alignment between their policy and their overall district vision. It's also, it, it's also a great tool for informing your public. As you go through the process, the report that we generate and give back to you all and, and walk you through is a public document. And it really helps to frame what are the core functions of a board of education. Sometimes there's a misunderstanding in communities. They all believe that there are seven superintendents that got elected, and you're my personal superintendent because I elected you. And that's not necessarily, as you all know, the function of the board of education. So it really helps to frame what's the purpose behind our board and, and what are they working on to make themselves better, to help the, to help our district be successful. It promotes the concept of accountability. It's just that thought process that if we're taking a hard look at ourselves and trying to do the right work as a board, that sends a pretty powerful message throughout your community and throughout your district that we expect people to do what's right. We expect different leaders within our system to, you know, do what we know is going to help improve our system. Avoiding abuse of power and ensuring ethical behavior. The process is a process that's anonymous. So each of you, if you choose to do it, as board members, will receive a link from us. You'll go through, do the survey on your own time. We compile a report, and then that report does not necessarily tag that board member A said this, or board member rated these areas higher or lower. We, we do it that way, so we hope you can be open and honest. We come back and facilitate a conversation with you all as board members where we try to, try to see where those gaps are, see where there's, there's those places where people are feeling like they don't have a voice or some behaviors aren't really on the up and up. How do we make sure and try to address those going forward? And then it really helps with the evaluation process going forward also. There's a section in there related to your superintendent, relationship with your superintendent. Talks specifically about what our process is for evaluating that superintendent, but also in the different areas of policy and finance and, and communication. It sets kind of a, an expectation for you all of what we expect from our superintendent in the process of leading the district. It's very difficult for your superintendent to try to balance seven different opinions what the, of what the most important things are in those different areas. By going through a self-assessment of, of your actions, you, you start to get yourselves on the same page with your expectations in, in those areas. And then finally, it's going to help you with, with future planning. So what we mean by that is as we get the report put together, get the report back to you, we, we try to push you to prioritize. Okay, so as we looked across this, this self-assessment, what were really the areas that we probably need to get better at? And I can show you an example of what the report looks like, so you can kind of see what you would be seeing when I walk through the report. So I know the font on this might be a little bit small, but this, this page is just breaking down for you what the different areas are of the self-assessment. I know you've all seen the example template that I sent you. But the first area is just board member actions, the meetings of the boards. In other words, how do we function when we're out here in the public eye and we're trying to run a board meeting? Vision and planning, have we established a clear direction for our district of, of what's important? And then aligning our policy, our resources, our practices to those. Next section here obviously is policy. Here again, are we making sure that the policies that we adopt align with the overall direction that we want to go to help the kids in our community? And I always remind boards that policy isn't just those, those items that you have in a book or a manual or a link on your board docs that, that say, you know, policy X, Z, Y. Policy is really those things that you're taking action on every time you sit down at that board table. Because a polit, you're making a position known to the public. This is what we expect. This is the direction we're going. That becomes policy because it triggers action within your district. And then finance is another area that there's a few questions related to that. Again, looking at how well do we do aligning the resources to the overall vision and direction? And then finally, that last section is board superintendent relations. Have we built the right relationship there to make sure that the vision of the board is being executed and carried out? So those are the areas of the self-assessment. What we come back and do with you all is go through the results and, and specifically talk about where are the biggest gaps? So when you're looking at this, this is an example of a district. The, the blue is where we currently perform. It's a scale of one to four, one being poor performance, four being exemplary. The red is how important it was rated on average by the board members. So if you look at board member actions, their current, this district that we're looking at, they rated themselves fairly low or, or right in the middle on their current behavior as board members. However, they think that's a very important area for them to focus on to be a high, high-performing board. So, so we'll go through, and we come back and do the meeting with the board and go through this report. We drill down into each one of these areas, and we can, there's specific questions within each of those areas. And we can talk about, you know, like looking at this area here specifically, it's a night, there's a lot of consensus around thinking independently, speaking with one voice. Over here, in the best interest of the entire district, I would argue there's not a lot of consensus around our current behavior or performance in that area. So that would be an area where we talk about, okay, so what are some examples of things that we need to do to make sure that we're keeping the best interest of the entire district at the forefront versus personal interest and letting that take charge at the board table? And, and so that's, that's really what the, the report looks like. And there's, I could go through and show you each of the sections, but you get a sense of what each area of the report's going to look like. And then we come back and meet with you to walk you through the report and, and then kind of start to prioritize, okay, looking across all of these different areas are, of our performance, what are some of the priorities for us in the next twelve months to try to, try to work on? And, and we're there to help support you with strategies or ideas or, or things that we've seen be effective with other boards that you might try to, to address some of those things. So I'll kind of pause there, see if there's any, any questions so far.
Anyone? I just think it's necessary for us to be able to utilize this in order for us to move in a direction that will help us to work through the district to have great achievement. Because it builds good personality relationships.
I agree. I appreciate you coming virtually to explain it to us, Dr. Jordan.
You bet. Yeah. A lot of the districts that do this, it's turned into kind of an annual process for them to take a step back and look at the, the year and reflect on how did we do over the last year, and then also set the stage for the next year. Honestly, it's a great way to incorporate new board members into kind of a culture. I noticed at the beginning of the meeting tonight, you have a set of norms that you read every meeting. I think that's a great step to take. But this would be an opportunity to really gauge, are we living those norms? And how are we doing with those things? So there's some pieces here and places I've watched tonight that you guys are working on. You're trying to, trying to get yourselves focused on the right work and, and trying to get on the same page. This is just something that could help you with that.
So if we, this is Janie Humphries talking, sorry. So if we decided to go with this, what type of a timeframe do you recommend from start to, to when you come in, work with us?
What I, what I tell folks is, is start with kind of the end in mind. So if you're wanting to do the self-assessment as part of a, a board retreat, or some districts have study meetings or work meetings compared to their regular board meetings, really, it's just a matter of you deciding, at what point do you want us to facilitate the conversation around the final report? And then we typically work back about two to three weeks from that date. So for example, if you choose a date in late June, we're going to work back about three weeks from that date. How the process works is we send you all a link individually. It'll come from our offices, and we'll, we'll keep track of, of how many people have taken it, and we'll send you reminders. But, but we'll send it out about three weeks before whatever date you choose for us to come and facilitate the conversation with your board. That gives us enough time to give you the reminders and then also get the report put together. Because it's, it's just a, it's a online survey, but we have to pull the data and then build the report. And that takes us a few days after the surveys are done to, to get the report built. So really, it's a matter of you all deciding when you want to go through the report and have that conversation about, okay, what did we do well over the last year? What are going to be some priorities for us to improve upon over the next year? Whenever you want to have that conversation is kind of the date you need to establish. And then I'll, I'll get the link built and sent to you all. It's a, it, we can gear this up easily within a day or two of getting the link ready to go out. So you can decide what the date is, and then we'll count backwards and figure out what date it comes out to the board.
And we're going to talk a little more about the culture survey as well.
Yep.
This is Dr. Nguyen. Hello, Dr. Jordan. How are you?
Hey, I'm good. How are you this evening?
Good. I don't have a question about this because I'm familiar with this tool, but I do have a question when you get to the final page of this survey.
Okay. This, the open comments question, or the open comments area of this? Is that the section you're, the, the last page of this document? there, the last page of this document? Are you talking on this one or are you talking the document that I sent ahead of time?
I'm talking about the document you sent ahead of time.
Okay, this page, okay. Yeah, so if we, you want me to jump over here, I'll happily answer any questions that you have. Okay, this after self assessment?
Correct. So help me understand, this seems a little disconnected from the air quotes, board self evaluation? Because one would, one would think that after you facilitate us with the results, then the board would establish an action plan. This doesn't seem like it it is, it is correct.
Right, this, this, you're you are, you are correct. What typically happens at the end of this process is there are some things that come out as priorities for our behavior and functioning as a board. But there's also a lot of times some conversation around priorities that the district leadership team needs to take into account as they put their plans together. So for example, community engagement and and communication may be something that comes up. You all as a board have a clear expectation, we want to work on that and improve that. You're going to need some assistance with your administrators to to make that happen. And now that I'm reading through this and the way you frame that, I probably need to clean up some of the language in this to draw that line a little clearer. But that that is a a valid question. This is a little bit disconnected is how I have it written here. This is, this document's evolved over the years and I need to probably clean this last page up a little bit better to delineate that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? Thank you so much. So we possibly will need to set up a date?
Yeah, and so I would recommend that June 9th is, that's the first meeting in June. We usually have a lighter meeting during that first meeting. And Dr. Jordan had said that it generally takes him about 45 minutes to an hour just to review it. And then if we do the community climate survey, which I think he's going to talk a little bit about as well, then maybe we could have a board workshop scheduled for July 19th to do a little digger, a little bigger digging into both the community survey plus our survey and have a a longer workshop. And that would be on July 18th, I was thinking about maybe. But that would be on a Saturday in which we could dedicate a little more time. But for what we, he just talked about, I do want to make a motion that the board go with KASV to do our self evaluation and to have it presented at our June 9th meeting.
Can, I know you just made the motion. Yeah, the wait before I ask question, because I I hate for the way these board meetings have been going, I find it hard to believe that June 9th would be light. In lieu of, we got summer school, the budget. I don't think the ninth would be a good date at a board meeting. Yes, I don't think.
And that's in, and that's in the middle of our graduations, if we stay on the schedule. Could we, could we possibly make a determination at our next board meeting what dates might look good for the rest for all of us? Or is it time to think about that?
Yeah, could we have Susan compile that if we could get it sent to her so that we don't wait to the last minute?
That that I think that'd be good, but trying to to pick a date right now with our schedules all okay, all over, I think would be would be difficult.
Okay, well, remove the date, but I think most that we at least go with KASB to do our self evaluation for our board.
And it's been moved and seconded that we will do a KASV self evaluation for our school board. The date to be selected at a later time. Any questions or comments? Susan, do the roll call vote for this, please? Susan, you're muted.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Agar.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
And the second part of that was our community culture survey.
Right. So I've also, I believe you have a hard copy of the community culture and climate survey that that we typically use in districts. You know, let me jump over to that real quickly here. So I sent you this document and this document is, I kind of explained how the process works typically with this. Is typically, this is a, it's a link that is sent out through your normal communication channels. What typically happens is you push out the link and you leave it open for a period of a couple of weeks, sending out reminders and, you know, retweeting, reposting, whatever mechanism you use, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, however you'd like to do that. We push that out and as you go through this, folks identify basically their role or their function with your district. And then it goes into several different areas of your district. The first area is based on instruction. And with each of these areas, so instruction is the first one. There is an area rated on the significance of that area. So how significant is it that students are academically prepared for the next grade level by the end of the school year? Obviously, not significant up to very high significance. It's kind of similar in in form to how we conduct the board self assessment. Because also within the instruction area is some questions around performance on the instruction items. So it's the same set of questions where the the people taking the survey will say, yes, this is important or it's very significant. But we're not performing very well. And so what we're going to look for as we go through the report is where do the gaps exist? And we can break that down by parents' opinion. We can break that down by student opinion, teacher opinion. And so what you'll see at the end of this process is very similar what we just looked at with that. The 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 board self assessment, we do a comparison of current performance to significance. And then we take a little bit deeper dive into those conversations when we go through the same same process. We'll generate a report, we'll come back, work with your board. The the cost that we charge for this, there is an hour of of time built in with the board. What we've typically seen districts do with this is the board goes through this, dives in and 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 learns about what's in there. And then that gets handed off to to your district administration and your leaders in your district to think about, okay, we know there's a gap between, you know, instructions, the first area. If you go to the next area, it it talks about, let me go to the next area there. It's talking about school climate. And so if there's some gaps in significance in our performance in school climate, how do we start to address those things as schools and leaders within the system? This instruments a a a great way to gather data and a great way to to monitor trends within your system over time. Districts that are using a tool like this typically try to do it at roughly the same time on an annual basis. So if we're implementing program X, Y, and Z that's supposed to address school climate, how is that working for us? Are we starting to see some improvement on those things where people said it was very significant, but our performance was very low? Are we starting to see those two things? It's significant and we're performing really well is ultimately where you want to get with this. So similar processes as far as the report goes and what it looks like. This is a, this thing will take folks probably about 10 minutes to work through. It is a little bit lengthy. If there's some specific items that you want us to tweak or adjust, we can do that. For example, I'm working with a a district out out west. They they wanted to focus in on on maybe a little more questions around building level leadership. They've had a lot of turnover there in that district over the last several years. And they wanted to to get a sense from a community, how is our building level leadership performing? And so we built a section in for building level leadership. So there are some things that we can tweak a little bit in this one. If there's some areas that you want want us to to look at, just be just be cautious that it it does take about 10 minutes to take now. If you start adding a whole lot of other items in there, people are going to get survey fatigue and just check out after they they get so far into it. So I'll be quiet and see if there's any questions I can answer related to this.
Dr. Jordan, this is Janie Humphries. Do you offer this in any other language? Do you have it in Spanish, for example?
You know, I could work to get it put in Spanish. I don't have a link built right now to do that, but we've we've built surveys before. And in Spanish is the most prominent one we've built them in.
Okay, so it is possible to to have it at least in two languages.
Yep.
Dr. Jordan, this is Yolanda. And I don't know if this is a question for you or if this is a question for board members that have been here for a while. So I think surveys are great. But I am, I am more on the survey page if action is taken from there. So in the, in your experience or in the experience of the board, do we come back with a strategic plan? Do we come back with, this is, these are the results? And this is where we recognize that we need to make some changes or some difference. I think transparency will be huge, especially when we're asking our community to go out and fill out something like this. But then even with the data we receive from how we're doing as a board.
Right. Couple of thoughts on that. I would, I would tell you that if you're going to go to the time and energy to do something like this and ask people to make that commitment, probably need to have some steps in place for when the results come in or what you expect to have happen with that. So for example, working with the district that's that's getting ready to do one this spring, they they already know that they're going to hand off the data to an admin team to help craft their, they're going to adjust their KISA goals based on some of the data. It's going to help drive some of that work that that they're doing with their KISA process or the accreditation process. So I would, I would advise if you're going to do this, have some conversation about plans on on how you see this information being used. Because it it is, it's a 10 minute survey and it if people do these with the understanding that they're being heard and that information is going to help change or drive some some improvement within your system.
Okay, and would to clarify, when is this survey normally given to the community? Is there any particular time that's better than another time or?
No, ideally, I think you give it when it seems to work best for your community and you do it consistently. If you're going to do it over time, I try to shy away from late in the school year. I just, the district that I'm working with right now to to build one of these, I'm trying to encourage them, maybe holding off to do it in in the fall. I think this time of the year, people are are kind of frazzled and especially right now with what we're going through with with the COVID situation. Your continuous learning plans may may not necessarily sync up with some of the language that are that's in this survey because of what you've done. And and that would be my advice is is really be thoughtful about when you do it. Whatever timeframe you pick, try to be consistent with you doing that. A lot of, I I think ideally, you'd probably be doing it late fall or like winter. Or you'll be doing it late winter, early spring, but try to stay out of the last month of school and try to stay out of that first month of school ramp up. Because everybody's excited to go back to school, things are great. You're not going to get a true sense of of how the climate is, how instruction's going, how these other things are happening within your system.
That's great.
Is it, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. You mentioned the English and Spanish. Is it possible for you to work with our EOL department to try to see create some more opportunities in other languages?
Absolutely.
Communicating, because you don't want to leave anybody out and people already feel like they're left out. So if there's some way to broaden the scope, because mine that has so many different languages. So you want to be able to communicate to all of those groups.
I think we could easily build in the front page of that. They select their preferred language and it would jump to a set of questions based on their language preference.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
I I would just recommend that we think of a summer board workshop in which we can take time to discuss our results plus how we would plan to carry out the community results. I don't know if we could be able to later on submit ideas or suggestions. But I agree with Yolanda that let's have a plan of action so that we can confidently be able to survey our community and then do something once we've put something in place.
Yes.
Because we have done many things in the past where we had the when we went to various locations throughout the summer and had a listening tour. So where we listened to our community and there was a lot of questions asked, so well, what are you going to do now? Or what's the result of it? And what actions will we put into place? And then, you know, some community followed up and said, well, how are you handling the concerns that came up? So I think that's a great idea to firmly put something into plan and possibly just have this as a yearly activity that the board does.
Right. And even before we got into the area with COVID-19 now, we were planning on having listening tours again. And so we had to stop. But this would be very beneficial to help us to move in the right direction to get the support from the community. So could we possibly, when we meet at our next meeting to talk about our self evaluation, to also discuss a plan for us following through with working, setting up with the community to do the survey? Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you. Dr. Jordan, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. One of the things I know that I've learned a lot since I've come on to to attend various workshops with KASV, and so it's very beneficial. Thank you so much.
Glad to be here. We're happy to help you in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're ready for the CARES Act funding from Mr. Covington?
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Miss Superintendent. I put into the board's library the information that we received about the CARES Act education funding. Not going here tonight to read you that total document, but just to say that we have received our allotment for the county, which was $8,432,728, of which we must spend $336,488 on our non-public partners. We had to submit an application back to the state with some assurances. And in that application, our assurances were ensure equitable access to those supplemental funds to be used to enhance services that are typically provided using existing state, federal, local funds in order to provide emergency services to students as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Ensure that expenditures follow the CARES Act 12 categories of allowable uses. Ensure that reimbursements are used for those services that are a direct result of the COVID-19 pandemic. And ensure equitable services will be provided to our non-public schools in that same manner. These were the assurances that was recommended from the state that you put into the application. And like I said, we submitted that and it was approved. The the 12 items that you can spend the dollars on are listed in that document. I wasn't, didn't really want to read them all to you, but a lot of it is making sure that you cover expenses that you had to incur and to support the COVID-19 services that you had to put in place. We currently are working on a plan that we will present to you all on the night that we present the budget. We will probably need a workshop that night to discuss the the expenditures of the CARES funding. Like I said, it's $8 million. It's one-time money. I strongly suggest that we don't add salaries to it because you will put a hole in your budget for the following year. And the requirements are that you spend the money first and then submit a form to the state to get your money back. So we're in the process of drafting some ideas about how to spend the money in in as in regards to our ongoing budget. Because these these dollars are used to supplement that budget and in our total budget process and our proposal, we will have a suggested use for these funding. And that's the report, ma'am.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
This is Valdina Nguyen. Mr. Covington, do you have some dates on what you're speaking of? And are you saying, help me understand, are you saying that the same night you present the ideas that you have submitted in the application, you expect us to approve?
No, no, it won't be an approval. That first meeting on the second board meeting in May would be a proposal. And in part of that proposal, I'm
I'm sorry, we're in May now.
Yes, our second board meeting in May, we're bringing to you the budget. Superintendent's recommendation.
May? We're in May now.
That's the twenty-sixth, May twenty-sixth.
Second, okay, okay.
Second board meeting in May. And part of that presentation will be some suggestions on the use of the CARES funding, just a proposal. So we have a discussion on that evening.
And so therefore you recommended that we spend some time talking about?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so help me understand, the board does not have to approve your application?
No, that the only the application was just those assurances. It wasn't how you're going to use the money. You just had to list the assurances.
Dr. Wayne, any other questions?
This is Drew.
Yes.
This is Wanda Brownlee Page. I would like to see us not do a budget at a regular board meeting. It's so much and our meetings tend to go long. But I I would prefer that we have clear minds, clear heads, and we do this. Because we have some critical issues to talk about. And I would just rather have a meeting where it's just budget.
Well, you you do know that we're on a timeframe that we have to if we select a date, we have to make sure that we do it as quickly as possible. Because, Mr. Covington, correct me if I'm mistaken, but we have to have everything completed at a certain amount of time. Am I correct?
Yes. Remember to approve the budget, you have to have a special call meeting in July in order for us to get it published. And I think that meeting will be like July twenty-eighth. So we must be finished for you to adopt to approve the budget to be published at that July twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, well, we still have time. But I'm just saying, I'm saying that May twenty-sixth, and when we go back in our handbook, it is said we should have been talking about budget in January because we always seem to be in a big push, a big tight. And we never thought this would be going on with COVID-19. I just I understand July, I think we can get it done. But I don't unless we not do all the stuff, cut back on some of this stuff at a regular board meeting. But this money thing should be money only and we should deal with those issues. It's too critical. We got too much.
What day would you recommend? And and then consider, like you said, we're dealing with a lot right now. It may be that we can have our meeting on the twenty-sixth, but we might have to cut back on some other things so we can focus more on the budget since that is a major issue at the at this particular time.
Yeah, I think that would be good, Maxine, to cut back on the other things in our board meeting. Just have the consent items and then focus on that. We can cut back others.
Or Ms. Page, we are you suggesting that maybe we have a separate budget meeting?
Yeah, because this is this is a lot. I don't want us to come and be here all night and we're supposed. I think our minds should be clear. We have some critical issues and it shouldn't be like tonight. We got a jam-packed agenda. I get that. That's what we do. But when it comes to this budget and there's going to have to be, we don't know how much we're getting. That's a limbo. We're getting this one-time money. I get that.
So what date would you suggest since you since you do that?
Wait a second.
I have a calendar in front of me, but I can run and go get one. I'm sorry. But I'm I'm just saying anything besides trying to do this on the twenty-sixth.
Dennis, what were you saying?
After the presentation on the twenty-eighth, we still have the small work group the next week for us to walk you through the budget individually. I suggest we get that piece done before we all get back together and have a workshop.
And Madam President, I would like for us to have a full workshops because each of those small work groups perhaps do not get the same information. And these budget workshops, if I'm not incorrect, are supposed to be public.
I would prefer I this is Janie. I would prefer that we have the full board at a budget workshop because we don't all we don't all think along the same lines. And when one person asks a question, sometimes that prompts a question from someone else. And it's it's a and everyone hears the same thing and can get everything clarified at the same time. So if our next meeting is on the twenty-sixth, which is a Tuesday, Ms. Page, would you be looking like maybe a Saturday meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
Saturday, I don't care, just as long as it's just budget.
And maybe on the the twenty-third or the thirtieth?
I'm flexible. I can do it.
Would that be possible, Ms. Drew? That way we're not in the evening and we're not infringing on anyone's work time.
Well, the twenty-third is Memorial Day weekend.
Okay, what about the thirtieth?
The thirtieth is a good day for me. My time is flexible as well.
And I I really would prefer to do it starting in the morning instead of in the evening so that my mind is fresher.
I agree.
Okay, I need to hear from other board members. Would that be acceptable for you?
I still think that Dennis should go over what he had planned to go over on the twenty-sixth.
Yes, that that definitely would take place.
Right, so that we can have what we need by the time we have the full meeting.
Exactly.
Because what scares me like tonight, we're talking about a textbook adoption.
Well, I think we're already
I don't have a no, no, I'm just saying I'm giving that as an example. I'm not trying to debate or argue anything. Let me finish, please. We're talking about hearing the information and then it said approve and we haven't really seen the full picture of a budget and what we've done, what we got left and what we need to do. That's what I so all I'm saying, I I need more information. Maybe other people can operate other than that. But I think we need to have everything.
So the thirtieth is a good date for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I need to hear from other board members.
This is Yolanda. The thirtieth works for me as well.
Yeah, this is Randy. I like the idea of getting that introduction from Mr. Covington at the on the twenty-sixth and just giving us that overview that the thirtieth works for me. That allows us all a few days to digest what Mr. Covington has given us and then having a full actual session.
Thank you.
I I really like that idea, too, of Mr. Covington presenting to us on Tuesday. Then we have time, like Randy says, to look over the stuff and come up with some good questions if we have them and have good discussions on Saturday.
So therefore, may I get a motion?
I move that we have a special budget meeting on Saturday, May thirtieth, beginning at nine AM. Is that a good time for people?
That works for me.
Second.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded that we will have a board workshop covering the topic of budget on May thirtieth at nine o'clock AM. Are there any other questions or comments?
Is our place pending pending the pandemic? Is that what we're doing?
I would prefer to meet online.
Well, I I imagine we have to do it online unless we're allowed to meet in person. Randy, do you know if we'll be allowed to meet in person then?
I don't know the phase where we are.
Mr. Covington, in the past, before we had the laptops, the board used to get, you know, a written blue book for the board meetings. And I know that last year, I think it was you presented us with quite a few papers in a in a binder. If if you could have something like that put together for those of us who don't do well with reading everything online.
Yes.
Maybe we can have the security guards, which is who used to do that drop off a package at each of our houses.
Definitely.
So those of us who need that paper would have it.
Yes.
Not I do not prefer paper, please.
Well, that's that's fine, but I'm saying for those of us who
For for budgets, I do. So even though I have it online, when it comes down to budgets and numbers, I prefer paper to mark it up.
Yeah. So that that would make it a little bit easier that you're not having to show us everything slide by slide and that's telling you to back up and
I would have a bracket notebook for all of you.
Oh, that would be perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded. Susan, would you please do roll call vote for this special meeting? Susan, you're on mute.
Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen.
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy Yeager, yes, and no printed book, please. I do everything online, so no, no worry about printing me anything.
Thank you. And Wanda, thank you for the suggestion of us taking some time to be able to thoroughly go through this process. Really appreciate it. At this time, we're now ready for the reports from the superintendent.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept the report on textbook adoption and approved purchase of curriculum resources for the twenty 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 twenty-one school year as submitted by Matt Anderson, Director of Curriculum, Alan King, IRAM Assistant Superintendent, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. Dr. Faust, really appreciate your time this evening for us to propose our purchase for next year's curriculum materials. Before I get started, I just want to give a shout out to all of those that made this possible. I have some of my colleagues that are watching tonight. Miss Cheryl Byer, Spencer Martin, Kurt Parker, and Kristy Chalk. They have put in hours upon hours to find the best resources that are out there for our students and our teachers. And I want to say a thank you to all of those teachers and stakeholders that were part of this process. It took them hours upon hours to do this work as well. So I want to say thank you to them. And then thank you to those who came to our sneak peek, board members that were able to come. And those who weren't, I I know that you truly do understand the importance of curriculum and instruction in the system and how important it is to have those materials in our teachers' and students' hands. So I want to just take us back to February twenty-second, when I gave you a report on the status of our curriculum resources. That was at that point, just giving you an idea of what we were dealing with as it related to the the resources that were in our teachers' hands. And I'll touch base on those here in a second. Tonight, I do ask that you do approve this purchase as this is an essential part to the functioning of our school, for our teachers, and ultimately our students. So let me go to my screen here. You can all see this. Perfect, okay. So just wanted to highlight the strategic priorities of the Board of Education. We ultimately know that the work we do in this system is around ensuring that we have our students that are college and career ready and that student achievement is is a key factor. In our department, and I know of your in from the board, we we are going to be financially responsible and we are going to be good stewards of anything that we purchase for our system. And then finally, our one of our goals is to ensure that we have the right things in place so we don't lose teachers to other systems. We deserve and our students deserve the best of the best. And so by having quality re quality teachers and quality resources in our teachers' hands, we will make a huge difference for our students. So I'll take us back. I brought this slide up in February about why it's so important that we have curriculum instructional resources that are up to date. First of all, I'll say it. I'll follow Dr. Thompson last week when he talked about equity. By ensuring that we have quality resources that are in our classrooms, we can ensure that our kids are getting opportunities to learn rigorous and critical content. Our students deserve the best, no matter what zip code they live in. We know that along with a high-quality teacher, research indicates that if they that high-quality teacher has a high-quality curriculum resource in their hands, it can have a significant impact on students. So why do we in KC KPS need resources? Well, first of all, I think if you were at that meeting like I was, there were a lot of people in there. And when I started sharing the dates of our materials, I think there were audible gasps from the 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 audience and just how I think disgusted and disappointed they were that we had such out-of-date materials. I've been in this district for fourteen years and there are still some resources in our teachers' hands that were in my hands at that time, too. So we have resources that publishers aren't even updating anymore. We also have resources that currently do not line one hundred percent to our standards. The state of Kansas adopted new math and English Language Arts Standards in two thousand and seventeen. And if we have textbooks from two thousand and ten or before, obviously, they do not align. And so our kids aren't getting that quality education that aligns to what they need to know and be able to do. And then finally, there are courses that currently don't even have a curriculum resource and teachers are creating their own or they're using novels or they're using what I call the the TPT curriculum, the Teachers Pay Teachers curriculum or Pinterest curriculum, which is not vetted through high-quality research. So based on our conversation with you all in February, we discussed that we had some some work to do, some next steps. Those three steps are listed here. First of all, we needed to use the data that we were collecting from our our assessments, from our teachers, our perception surveys, to make some determinations on where do we need to focus our efforts around the curriculum resources that need to be updated. We have a lot of them, so we had to do that work. We had to really look at our own department budget to make sure that we could fund all of these textbook adoptions. And so we looked at our department budget and our end-of-year funds to make sure we could kind of reallocate some money to make sure that we could pay for the resources as much as we could. And then finally, we knew that we were we were going to be behind. There was a shortfall in our funding. And so we needed to work with Finance Department to determine are there any funds that can help support this effort to get those materials for our students. So based on data, we knew that secondary math was one of our biggest concerns. If you look at the data for two thousand and nineteen, you'll see that we're at ten percent and then low teens. Not 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 good. And our students deserve better. Our secondary ELA, same thing, we're sitting at ten percent. We haven't even hit twenty percent of our students. And when resources don't align to standards, it's really hard to move that number up. Our science proficiency rates, this is for grades five, eight, and eleven. This just encompasses them all. In order for a student to be considered proficient, they would need to score at a level three. So we're sitting at almost eighty percent of our students sitting at a level one or level two, so not proficient in science. And then finally, we know that fourth and fifth grade currently do not have a curriculum resource. Teachers are utilizing classroom libraries or, as I said, the resource that was in hands of teachers fourteen years ago, which we wouldn't even want our teachers using, but that's all they have. And so what we need to do is ensure that they have the right things because our our data is still below thirty percent. Maybe a little better than what our secondary numbers look like, but still, this 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 isn't good. This is not where we want to be as a system. This is not what we want for our students. So, speaking of proposals, everything that we present to hear to you tonight, we worked with the Kansas Learning Network and we worked with the Kansas Technical Assistant System Network, TASN, to ensure that any other resources that we were going to purchase were in alignment with what the state is requiring as it relates to evidence-based and research-based curricula. So the first one that we need to in our priority, and you have a list of all of this in the board docs. I gave you like a a more detailed version of this. So I'm going to just pull out some highlights from what our our purchase would include. Secondary math is huge. We're we're redoing sixteen courses. And that affects approximately eleven thousand, two hundred students. So this is a big one, and that's why the amount is much larger than some of our others. This includes a four-year student and teacher print and digital access. And you'll notice that I highlighted or underlined and emboldened digital access. We needed to ensure, based on what's happening right now with COVID-19, that we have access to anything and everything digitally for our students and our teachers. Just because we're of all the unknowns. And so we wanted to make sure. So we have four years for the the sixth grade through the two, six years with our fourth-year math courses. And those don't change as much. And those are more like our college prep kinds of classes. That also includes classroom kits with durable That also includes classroom kits with durable materials for manipulatives. We want to build that conceptual understanding of math, and so that takes materials. One thing that this purchase does include is it includes some free professional learning, free digital and print teacher resources, reduced shipping, discounted materials for purchasing multiple years. We negotiated a savings of almost a half a million dollars just by doing some multiple, multiple-year work with these folks. Secondary English, again, approximately 11,200 students, but this is only nine courses. And so the price is a little less. You'll notice that three, we were going with three years of student and print materials with digital access for six through English two, and we're doing three years with student and print materials with digital access for English three and four. We will get some novels with this, which can be aligned with the curriculum resource, and that's because we purchased multiple licenses for students. Again, we've negotiated lots of perks with this, such as professional learning, free digital and print materials, and reduced shipping. And we saved about $300,000 on that. Middle school science, we have three courses that we are doing, and that's approximately 5,200 students that are impacted by this purchase. It's three years with student and teacher digital access. Print materials will be available at request. Just knowing that we have a lot of people that like the digital piece, and we do have some that really like the print. The teacher and student equipment and consumables is all part of this. So those would be for labs, which is another reason why this is a little more expensive for only three courses, because you have lots of materials. You'll see that you get professional learning, free shipping, and discounted for purchasing multiple years. And we saved $53,000. Finally, our fourth and grade, fourth, fourth and grade, fourth and fifth grade English Language Arts proposal. This is about 3,360 students. This is two grades, but there's a lot more consumable cost in this, as well as there are readers, there are smaller books, so we have more things. But this is a five-year teacher digital access, and then the purchase also includes, again, professional learning, free shipping, and discount for purchasing for five years. And that saved us about $64,000. So why is it so important that we make this move now and what we need to get accomplished? We have professional learning. Due to COVID-19, we had to push, put pause on this, so our department could really focus on the continuous learning and the work that needs to be done for that. So we had to push this back a little bit. We would like to have had this purchased earlier, but unfortunately, that was not able to happen, because we start doing professional learning in May, and that's when we provide the resources to folks to let them look at them, let them get into them, so they can start thinking about how this is going to be used the next school year. We also provide them with our written curriculum, our GVC, so they can start thinking about how they would plan. We do summer opportunities for further exploration of those curriculum resources, the curriculum and the resources. And then we'll do again in August for any new hires. We do the same work with the overview and getting people into the work, and then we really dig into the standards-based planning with our curriculum and those resources. We continue all of our professional development throughout the years. So September through May, we'll continue to provide professional development, especially around how can we use these resources to dig deeper into what they have to offer to support instructional planning. And then we will continue year after year to give ongoing professional development based on our data and so forth. We also will work with David Rand in his department. This is something that David and his team have started to do, which we find really beneficial. We're doing program evaluations, and we will be doing program evaluations over our curriculum and resources. One of the things that those program evaluations will do is they will look for usage achievement and perceptions, including, but not limited to, how we use those materials, how our students are achieving, and then finally, some student and staff perception data, so we can better refine and better understand how we can provide some curriculum development pieces as well, because that will help develop our curriculum. And then it'll also help us determine if future curriculum resource purchases are necessary, based on the evaluations that we do. So I'll take us back to February 2022nd. We brought to you a budget concern that we were facing. Our curriculum budget for new textbooks this year was $900,000. When we came to you, we had a total proposed textbook purchase of approximately $2.6 million. So that gave us a shortfall of 1.7. And remember, we talked about this as a three-year stop measure, like gap, to fill these gaps that we had, and so we wanted to show that to you. Because of all the hard work of our team and the negotiations we were able to do, remember, we were able to save the district approx, almost $900,000 with all the negotiations that we did with professional development, with the shipping, all of that. So that actually brought the total proposed textbook purchase down. And then what we were able to do, based on our next step, we were able to find funds. Although COVID-19 is a horrible thing, we actually were able to move some money around a little more, because we weren't going to use it for what we would have done if school were in session normally. So we were able to pull more money into that budget, which allows us to bring that, that gap down to $1.1 million. Like you noticed, we've done staggered contracts. That allows us to better sustain all the courses that we have over the course of the next few years. It'll get us in a regular review cycle, something that, you know, we mentioned earlier, we were not doing on a, a very good basis. We weren't keeping up with it. And then digital access, like I said, will allow us to continue to support the work of the continuous learning plan when we need it. So we still have a budget shortfall here of $1.1 million. So our final step was that we were going to work closely with Dennis and his team in the Finance Department to determine if there were additional funds available. I want to thank Dennis and his team for all their hard work to support this effort, knowing that we want what's best for kids, we want what's best for teachers and the community. They were able to find $1.5 million out of any lapsed teacher salaries, and then the associated insurance contributions, which brought that to $1.6 million. One of the things we have to remember is any money that we don't use this year, we lose it. And so this is our, our opportunity to purchase the, the best materials for our kids. So I, I do ask that you approve this tonight for our students, for our teachers. Like I said, I will advocate my tail off for all of the people in the system. So I do thank you for your time. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions?
This is Valdina Nguyen. So help me understand, thank you. Help me understand, lapsed teacher salaries are total amounts of teachers we did not hire?
Yes, ma'am. If we look back at the whole year, we had roughly between 30 to 35 vacancies that were not filled, that was budgeted. And so those are dollars that was earmarked for teacher salaries that we did not use.
I want to, I think this is great, Matt. Thank you so much. Because one thing that we continuously hear from teachers is they do not have all of the materials they need to properly teach. We've heard this over and over and over about how they've had to go out and get their own resources to bring into the school. So I thank you so much for this. And with that, I would ask that, I want to make a motion that we accept the report on the textbook adoption and approve the purchase of curriculum resources for 2020 to 2021.
Thank you. Is this time for questions?
I need to get it seconded first.
I'll second. This is Randy.
Thank you. It's been moving seconded. Do we accept the, approve this presented by Mr. Anderson for textbooks? Are there any questions or comments, Ms. Page?
Yeah, first, I want to thank the, I'm sorry, sweetheart, I forgot your name.
It's okay, Matthew.
Matthew, I'm sorry.
No worries.
I was thinking Rand, but when you said Mr. Rand.
I know, I said lots of names.
Thank you. I've always thought you did an excellent job in February. And I would agree, because I've taught for 30 years, and again, we use the same textbook for almost 15 years. So I get that. But my concern, and I just want to make sure I'm hearing clearly, that the lapsed teacher salary is for the 35 vacancies that we didn't fill. That money is from that. And then the FICA, is the insurance, is that the insurance money?
Social Security.
Oh, okay, social security?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And this is just for this year?
Current year. Doesn't affect next year as much.
Okay, because that's what scares me, because we haven't seen the full picture. I'm a dinosaur, so this is my beef. I want to see all the X's and O's. You know, we're putting money here, putting money there, but we haven't seen the full picture, and that frightens me. I just want to make sure we're not jumping up doing something, and then we leave something out, and then it's, oh, but then it's too late. So that's my biggest concern, and I'm sorry, I'm just telling you, I'm a dinosaur.
I don't believe, Ms. Page, your question was perhaps asked correctly, if I understand what the proposal will do. If this proposal is approved, and Mr. Anderson, you correct me, please. This is a contract to purchase at these prices for how many years?
It would be whatever was listed here.
Right, so one is four years, one is six years, and each of those curriculum packets had its own year length of, of.
Yeah, which allows us to do that sustainability piece.
So, so no, 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 that, that is not the.
But we're doing it, but we're doing it all upfront, so those costs pay for those six years, or they pay for those three years. None of these are recurring costs, if that makes any sense.
So what is your total proposal?
The total proposal, I have to go back here, excuse me, is this 1.1. The total proposal is $2.3 million. Our budget that we were able to pull together from our department with the $900,000 plus some other things that we weren't able to use, like transportation, we're not using that. We pulled it back into the textbook, so we could really put a big dent in what we needed to ask for extra beyond that. And so our, what we need is this $1.1 million.
Okay, and then that would serve as year one, correct?
It would serve as year one out of this, because, and I'm trying to say this in a way that makes sense. So our purchase, we would be okay with those purchases. These, and this next year's budget for 2020, 2020, 2021 is for materials that would be from a different curriculum. So that does not include any of the curriculum materials that we have purchased for the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, let me understand this. What you have shown us is a $1.6 million purchase for year one, that year one is over, correct?
It would be for next year, but we're using 2019-2020.
We're getting the money out of 1920 budget, because we didn't hire 35 teachers, correct? Have you disappeared from my screen?
Are you talking to me? Sorry, Dennis would, yes, according to Dennis, that 35, yes, that came from the 35 vacancies that we did not fill.
Now, those year one components, is what you had presented to us?
Yes.
Okay, so the 2021 budget, then the additional cost would be in another $589,000?
Yes, that's how much we would need above what's in his departmental budget to purchase all the materials in the 2021 year for the 2122 school year.
And you have, and how far have you run that out?
Just the three years.
But you had some components that had four years and six years, correct?
Yes, but we're purchasing all six years upfront, so there's no additional costs. Nope, yep.
Okay, so, but you, what did you just say about there are different components for 2021?
So that would be for, for example, we have world languages curriculum that we need to purchase for next year. And so that would be something totally different. So that would be a new, a new curriculum resource that we'd have to purchase.
So you are only, and I'm not being disrespectful, but you're only telling us one part of the curriculum purchase is necessary, or that you will recommend?
Repeat your question.
That if there are additional purchases, excuse me, if we have world curriculum, if we plan to present world language curriculum next 2021, there are additional, there's an additional cost that we're not seeing?
This is a proposed cost. We, we looked at what was available currently with that amount. What, what are the going rates for that curriculum, just to give you an idea of how much it would cost? That, that, yeah.
I understand that. And what I'm saying is, what you're asking us to approve this evening is the 1.16 of money you have put together. And these other, these other figures in red, or what?
And then this amount right here, the 1.155 in that first column, that's what Dennis's department is able to help us purchase with the $1.6 million.
But you're also asking us to commit ourselves for 2021, which we have to plan that budget for on the 30th?
At this point, I'm not asking anyone to approve anything but tonight's amount, or for this year's amount. I'm not asking for, and Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong. At this point, I'm not asking for the $589,000 or the 300-some thousand dollars in that last bid. I'm only asking that we purchase the resources for tonight, which ended up being this $2.3 million, which our department can pay the 1.176, and then Dennis's department can pay that. That's all we're asking for tonight.
Okay, then, then I'm sorry, the, the presentation didn't make that clear.
It is confusing, because this was what we used. I wanted to remind people. I wanted to go back, so I used the same slide, so I do apologize. Yes, I apologize, so.
Okay, but moving forward, I'm not, I'm not sure if what you're saying is clear, because the 1.155 cost, is it not based on multiple-year purchases?
It, it's based on a one-time purchase for multiple years.
Okay, so therefore, if we agree to the contract that pays out 1.155 by virtue of the savings we have obtained, there is not a clause saying we agreed to year two, three, four, or we don't get the savings?
Suzie, if you want to jump in, I have Suzie Legg. She's my curriculum coordinator. She's been part of this work. And perhaps she can shed some light on this as well. Suzie, can you shed some light on this, please?
Sure. Hi, good evening, Board. I, I believe what we're, what the question is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Nguyen, but is that looking at what the future purchase, or what we're actually purchasing now for what we're committing to, is that what you were asking for some clarification around?
Yes, ma'am.
So if for each of those different areas, it's a little bit different as far as the length goes. And so roughly for math, we're looking at four years for the bulk of our courses and six years. So this cost that we're proposing tonight covers those costs for those courses. And then that would be something similar, if you go back and look at the English Language Arts slide for secondary. That timeframe's just a little bit different. Thank you for whoever's driving the PowerPoint for me. That's that, three years, and there's those nine courses, and with math, there were those 16 courses. That's that, three years, and there's those nine courses. And with math, there were those sixteen courses. So when we look into the next budget year of twenty twenty-one, we're not coming back around looking for materials again for these same sixteen or these same nine courses. They'd be different courses. So for different content areas, for all those other content areas that we have under curriculum and instruction. So that's why Matt was projecting out that there will be additional costs that come as we continue to get on a regular review cycle for all of the courses that we have. So I don't know if that offers any clarity, or come at me again and I'll, I'll try another.
Well, let me read it back to you and, and help me understand what I heard, I think I heard you say.
Okay.
That the one point five million will pay for the three years, the five years, the six years of the, um, math, English language, whatever.
The, well, and the total cost is two point three. That's the total cost altogether. Not just one point, one point one. The one point one was the shortfall that we were getting from the, um, area that Dennis talked about.
So what you're asking us to come up with is one point one million dollars?
We, we are actually proposing how we found the money within our current budget to cover the two point three that's, that's being that it will take for us to actually make this purchase. So we're not really asking for any additional money. We're sharing with you, um, how we have found and how we're allocating the money that we do have available between our department and Dennis's department in order to pay for that need.
Okay, so does that mean that if we were to approve this proposal, one point six that's from thirty-five teachers we did not hire, I'll just say one point six from money that was already in the department? Does that cover this proposal?
Yes. It more than covers it.
And that's like about two percent of unfulfilled positions of that money that's available.
And that only is a cost today, and that then starts year one, when actually year one is over, correct?
The implementation would start in twenty twenty-one school year. That it would technically be the year one. It would be year one of implementation.
Twenty twenty-one?
Yes.
So when we then look to build our budget next week, are you saying you are not planning on coming back with additional textbook request fun, for funds?
Not for these particular courses.
Exactly.
We, we will have a need to continue to, um, purchase materials for other courses as we, as we go. Like that is a reoccurring cost in general.
Okay, and the, can you go back to you, please, your slide with the other outline years?
Yes.
So when then, on the twenty-sixth or the thirtieth, we will see five eighty-nine, two forty-seven again?
No.
Okay, but we will see X, Y, Z for world languages.
That their budget on, on the twenty-sixth would have what they would buy with the nine hundred thousand. We, we typically buy the textbooks at the end of the year for the next year. So come about this time, or maybe a little earlier in the, in maybe March, we'll come back to you and say we have lapped salaries or another source of money that was not used to make up the five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollar difference. Because we won't be buying the textbooks until the spring for the next school year.
But you will come with nine hundred thousand for different courses?
Yes, and that's what's in that current adopted budget, the nine hundred thousand.
Okay, and for the next six years for math and algebra, you will not come back anymore for these textbooks?
Exactly.
Because all it took to do this was one point one million?
No, two point three million.
But you already have that?
Right.
Well, you don't already have that. You have one point one seven.
Six, and we're requesting that the board approve the redirection of one point one five five from lapped salaries to cover the difference.
Okay, so all that to say what? All that to say, why are we dealing with this piecemeal? And not as part of the budget? Because you, well, I'll just let you answer that, please.
Well, the, the money that's in the nineteen twenty school year is, is part of the approved adopted budget, the one point one seven six. And if we're to get aggressive, we find the textbooks that we need for next year, they need two point three million dollars. I mean, we, we could purchase one point one seven six worth of textbooks, and we will move this timeline out each year until we have enough money in their already adopted budget line of nine hundred thousand. Now, going into next year, if we want to, during the budget process, uh, find five hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars to increase their ongoing budget to one point four eight nine million, if that's what the board desires to depart, I mean, us to find, that we would have to go out and do it. But right now, their adopted budget is just nine hundred thousand. But we would have lapped salaries again at the end of next school year that, that could be used to supplement this line.
Okay, thank you.
We, we've had, motion has been made.
I don't, I don't have another statement. I just want to make sure we're clear. We're only voting for this one point five.
That's correct.
Twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty, but you're to go with that. That's it.
That's it. That's it.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Susan, will you do the roll call vote for passing, please?
Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valina Nguyen.
Valina Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Dr. Faust?
Yes, he's gotten the screen back.
Yeah, I was waiting myself.
King City Board of Education accepts as an information item, an update on the KC KPS Continuals Learning Plans Stakeholder Survey as submitted by David Rand, Director of Evaluation, Research and Assessment, and as recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
All right, excuse me. Good evening, Madam President, uh, Dr. Faust, Board. I appreciate having the time this evening to share some information with you all. Um, just to give you the heads up, I'm not going to hit you guys with an hour-long presentation. Um, uh, included in the board docs, uh, is the PowerPoint as well as the full report, uh, that the board can, and anybody, you know, in the public can peruse kind of at their own pace, uh, because I don't want to spend, you know, an hour just reading stuff to you that you all can, can read yourself. Um, especially considering what time it already is. Uh, so to share with you first, to talk about work that's been completed to date. Um, first of all, even though I'm the one presenting, uh, the results, uh, this has been a truly collaborative effort uh, between, uh, our department, uh, with curriculum, uh, with Matt and his team, uh, with federal programs, Lisa and her team, and the mailroom, uh, with Wayne, Mindy, um, and, and their team. Uh, everybody has been awesome, uh, as well as the ELL Department in helping us get, uh, translations. Uh, just a lot of people to thank, um, for a lot of hard work that has, uh, taken place, um, so far to get these surveys out, um, for our families, staff and students. Uh, so first to tell you, um, obviously, the first thing we had to do was create a survey. Uh, we did not start from scratch. Uh, Green Bush had actually put out some templates, uh, that gave us a good start. Um, our program evaluation specialists, who is our survey expert, um, you know, adjusted questions where appropriate. I think we added some things around nutritional services. Uh, but basically, we took that template and adjusted it, uh, to be, you know, um, appropriate for, for our stakeholders. Um, the first survey that went out was, uh, among staff. Uh, this staff survey was only online and only in English. Uh, our family and student surveys, however, we translated those into Arabic, Burmese, Chin, Mong, Karen, Nepali, Somali, Spanish and Swahili. Um, I think that hit pretty much everybody where there was more than two hundred and fifty or so students, two hundred or so uh, or more. Um, obviously, you know, we strive to do as many as possible. Um, but as you know, we have somewhere around seventy languages, uh, in, in, in the district. Uh, the family survey, um, in addition to the online links that were sent out, a paper pencil copy was sent to each household uh, via the postal service. Uh, that included directions as well as a self-addressed stamped envelope, uh, where they could reserve, return those to central office. Um, they got both, uh, the English version as well as the translation for, based on what they indicated was their home language when they enrolled. And so based off of that information, we automatically sent each household the, uh, language that was appropriate for what they indicated their home language was. Um, the links for the online surveys have been posted on the district website. They've also been sent out by communications via Bright Arrow, and I know communications has also, uh, put out several social media posts uh, directing people to our website and trying to solicit, uh, participation. Um, one important thing to keep in mind is that you guys are getting real-time data. Uh, the survey window is still open. Um, the data that I'm giving you guys this evening, um, honestly, other than, you know, just a couple of people I sent my PowerPoint to to, to, to get some feedback on, you know, administration has not seen this. And so I just really want to emphasize that, that, you know, we as administrators have not had time. Well, one, the survey window is still open, so this is not complete data. Uh, two, this is the first time a lot of folks are going to be seeing this data. And so, you know, they haven't had time to process or really come up, um, with responses or solutions, uh, to some of the issues that may arise. Um, but I think that it's really important to, uh, note that this survey is going to give us a lot of really good information, uh, should we have to come back to an online learning environment uh, next school year, which in my personal opinion, as a statistician and a person with common sense, uh, you know, I think is increasingly likely, um, with easing of orders without any sort of vaccination or testing and contact tracing system. So, um, I think this information will be really helpful for us, uh, in planning for possibilities for, for next year. So the surveys, um, were on a Likert scale. Uh, that's basically, you could say strongly agree, agree, you're neutral, disagree, strongly disagree, you don't know, or not applicable. And so these numbers that I'm giving you in the PowerPoint are based off of responses, uh, where they gave an opinion. So this kind of excludes the not applicable, um, part to, to just kind of be a little more accurate. So in talking about survey results, um, anytime you're polling or surveying people and you get seventy, eighty percent more of people agreeing on something, uh, it's, it's, it's a pretty big deal. Um, uh, several years back, I, in, uh, a news publication, uh, there was a news story, and this comes up every few years where they, you know, talk about uh, the percentage of people that are in favor of background checks for firearm purchases and that being around eighty-five, ninety percent. And in order to try to provide context, they, they talk about some other things. Um, like only eighty-one percent of people have a favorable opinion of apple pie. Um, around seventy-six percent of people, uh, have a favorable opinion of kittens. Um, and about seventy-one percent of people have a favorable opinion of current child labor laws. Um, so that just wants to give, I just want to give you some context to, when you start getting seventy to eighty percent or more of people agreeing on something, um, it's, it's, it's a pretty strong indication of where sentiment is. So, um, I want to present not only what we've done, uh, but talk about some of the, uh, results that we've got. Um, in general, we've had a lot of positive, um, responses from both families, um, as well as staff. Uh, the student survey was the last one to go out, and so, um, we're not really presenting much on that yet because, uh, I don't think we have a full data set. Uh, but with the other two surveys, I feel like we have enough uh, that we can present and give you guys some information. So for the family survey, as of right now, uh, or as of yesterday, we had had seven hundred and ten responses. Uh, this first set talks about where seventy percent or more of responses were favorable. Um, huge shout out to nutritional services and communication, that ninety-four percent of folks said they've been given information around access to meals. Um, also really high, uh, have received really high marks on communication. Uh, district communicates important information, eighty-two percent. Uh, the child's teachers are communicating seventy-seven percent. Um, and also, uh, folks feel like the technology supports, uh, the child's learning is both dependable and user-friendly at seventy-eight percent. Um, and that the child has the support they need at the home to succeed, uh, seventy-seven percent. Um, in addition, you'll see some more communication ones here, uh, with the child's teachers and the district, uh, communication, uh, ranking highly. Uh, again, that they're available to help, uh, their child with stu- schoolwork and that they're comfortable with that. Um, and seventy percent saying they get the necessary feedback from teachers to be, uh, successful. This, uh, is now in the sixty to seventy percent range. Um, it's still a good majority. Uh, and, uh, first, you see the amount of work that's expected of the kid is reasonable. Uh, sixty-eight percent, um, or, sorry, sixty-eight percent is, uh, the amount of work that, uh, the child expects me to help with is reasonable. Uh, and sixty-six percent that the amount of work asked from the child is reasonable. Again, uh, tech, some positive feelings around technology. Um, and sixty-three percent saying that they've been able to get the information they need, uh, when they've had a challenge. Um, these three are all at sixty percent, uh, often asked to help the child. Uh, the child's teachers communicated with me about the content of the teach, the students' learning. Uh, and that the work is just as meaningful as it would have been if school were in session as, as normal. Uh, these are in the fifty to sixty percent range. Uh, it's still a majority, um, but this is getting closer to fifty-fifty. Uh, special education services has, has been mentioned. Um, getting information about social emotional learning as well as mental health services um, is just a little above fifty percent, as well as information about a good homing, home learning environment. Uh, expectations for learning for the rest of the year, um, as well as, uh, about half of folks feeling that kids are learning, um, the same with the learning packets as they would be, uh, with technology. Um, another important thing to keep in mind with this family survey is these are all online responses only. And so some of those things around technology, uh, are gonna ha- be effective when we get the, uh, paper pencil results back. And then when we bring the full report back to the board, we'll be able to break out the online responses versus the paper pencil responses uh, to get a better kind of breakout of what's, what's really going on. Uh, questions were less than fifty percent of the responses were favorable, uh, that some parents are disappointed they're not being asked that much to help their kids with technology. Uh, that the child's been learning a lot, that they've been given information about techniques used in classrooms that possibly they could use at home, uh, that the child's principal communicates regularly. Um, and three percent, uh, reported that while at home, the child's been bullied or has seen inappropriate pop postings or comments from others uh, while trying to learn. Here are some comments from the family survey. Tried to kind of put a mix in of the both positive as well as, um, some of the challenges. Uh, first off, you know, really a shout out for our teachers, um, that this, this first comment feels that their child has had support, um, just because of the amazing job the teachers are doing, uh, in communicating and, and putting out that work. Uh, and a big, um, thank you to the, to the teachers. Um, another one that says their child's teacher's done amazing, very accessible, uh, very responsive. Um, I like this one. Uh, she said, uh, my child says she doesn't think she's learning, uh, but I think she's learning how to be more independent and learning to actually read and follow directions, that that's a very valuable skill and that her typing has actually gotten much. that that's a very valuable skill, and that her typing has actually gotten much better." And that as she has, and typing has helped her spelling get better, and that as she's recorded herself reading, that she catches more instances when she's like not using the correct grammar, like I just did right there, or has missing words in her sentences. So, the last, you know, so even though she may not think she's learning, she is. That was a positive thing to see. The meal service has been awesome and wonderful customer service at the Schlegel location. I think we can all agree it shouldn't be a surprise that nutritional services has done an awesome job getting meals out to families. Other comments, this was kind of a common refrain. Keep in mind, some of us still work a full-time job, so it's difficult to support our kids for another two to three hours. Slow it down with these assignments. Another thing we saw around technology was not necessarily just being able to access stuff that has some, but more being able to upload their completed work back up into the system. That we've seen several people struggle with that, and for the most part, they got it resolved. But that was a challenge that was identified. So, that is the family survey. For the staff survey, we have, as of yesterday, 577 responses. Here, the first set are going to be where 80% or more responses were favorable. Teachers said they're regularly available to help their kids, that they communicate. Administrators communicate with them. They're expecting a reasonable amount of work. Kids are adapting better than they, some other ones. And again, administrators are not only communicating regularly, but that information is important. They think that students have the support they need from the teacher to succeed for the rest of the school year. They collaborate. Again, communication, 80% saying that when they have a question, I know only another person outside my department or team can answer, central office, that I can get help. And again, a lot of positive around communication, collaboration. 75% of teachers have personally given their families information about access to meals. Also, a large amount of folks thought that priorities at the home are negatively impacting kids to succeed more than normal. That is, taking care of families, family members are doing chores, et cetera. And the amount of schoolwork expected by the district is reasonable as well. These are all still in the 70, 80% range. I've been getting useful information about professional learning. Again, communication, feel confident around having the professional support. I know when a challenge exists, I know where to refer them. And I feel confident I have the personal skills with technology I need to succeed in this environment. 60 to 70% that were favorable. Teachers saying they provide students with a specific criteria they're using to give feedback. Contacting families actually more frequently now, as well as giving information about other techniques that they use to help their students learn, confidence around technology, and explaining to students what learning for the rest of the year will look like. These are also all between 60 and 70. That's, you know, 62% of teachers said that some students didn't, that they didn't think would do well are actually doing great. That they've been giving useful information about how to adapt to this environment. That the PD has been useful, that they're confident in adapting their course content, and that they've been giving useful information about how students might actually struggle in this environment. Now, to the 50 to 60% range. I feel comfortable teaching my students while everybody's at home, feel comfortable helping with technology. The special education supports are easily accessible. Here at 40 to 50%, although these are all 48, 49%, this is pretty close to 50/50. The technology that supports them is actually helping them learn, that they've been given information about what a good learning environment is, that they've often been asked to help students with tech, and that technology is user-friendly. 45% think families are more involved now. The 42% think the work is just as meaningful. And 41% say they've given families information about mental health. These are the areas where under 40%, family members are contacting me more frequently. The technology is dependable at the home. Students have been learning a lot. Students have been using technology irresponsibly, 25% indicated that. And students are learning the same without the access to technology as they would have only 16%. Some comments from the staff survey, again, around communication, that it's been great. They really appreciate it. Another staff member said families are doing a great job working with their kids, that they have more contact with the families. They're putting together Zoom sessions, listening and working to meet individual needs of families. Some folks, you know, still aren't completely on board, but those are very few compared to the whole. I think this is important to point out. One common refrain that we saw that's represented by this content is that a lot of teachers felt fine doing review of stuff that they've already taught, but they were struggling a little bit more with presenting new content. And so, we saw a lot of folks saying they really appreciate all the training they've gotten so far. I'm in a better place, but if this is something that is going to continue, that they need support around how to introduce new content in a distance learning environment. Again, a lot of people saying we're doing the best we can in a difficult situation. Basically, we need to learn from this experience and plan for if this happens, you know, again, next fall. You know, just like I'm going to throw out the generic, "We love everything you're doing" comment. You know, I want to make sure that we're transparent. And we did have a comment that said, "I don't feel the district has provided adequate resources for teachers to continue teaching students online next year." So, just want to be very transparent that we do have folks that don't feel that they have the resources they need. Also, a lot of comments from staff around needing PD around distance learning and the continuous learning, not more traditional instructional PD that they may have received in the past. Lastly, I just kind of want to share kind of the response rates that we've had from the student surveys so far. Not really presenting any data for you this evening, but I did want to make sure that you knew that those were out there and that we have students from many, many of our schools that have responded. So, all that to say that, all in all, I think our families and our staff have, you know, positive things to say. You know, a lot of that is around understanding the difficulty of this. You know, one thing I saw on Twitter was this awesome picture that basically said, you know, "All of us are first-year teachers again, and this is essentially November of your first year, where you're just absolutely freaking out and kind of distraught and don't know what to do." But a reminder that by the end of the school year, you know, you're re-energized and you feel a lot more comfortable with what's going on. So, I think it's important to keep in mind that we're asking folks to do a lot of difficult things. And they, overall, all in all, seem to be doing fairly well and as best as we could hope. Obviously, there's a lot of things that we could tighten up if we have to come back to this next school year to make things more meaningful for our students. But all in all, that's where we are. That's our current state. And with that, I am happy to take any questions that the board may have.
Mr. Rand, this is Valdina Nguyen. I don't know if I missed you telling us this. How many total family surveys went out?
So, we sent the family survey to every single family. As of right now, we've had 710 responses. So, hopefully, we'll be getting more. So, 710 of the family and 577 of the staff.
Okay, so, 710 of 22,000?
Correct.
And 577 of how many, please?
If we, I mean, I think we sent it mostly to teachers. That's what, 2,02500?
Okay.
But yeah, staff in general is, I think, closer to 4,000.
Mr. Rand, this is Janie Humphries. When you say families, there could be more than one student in the family, correct?
That is correct. If they had, they received a survey for each student they have in their household. So, if they have five students across three schools, they got five separate surveys for each of their students so that we could collect information on each of their schools.
Oh, okay. That's a lot of surveys for a parent to fill out.
Yeah, it is. You know, and I may need to double-check to make sure that's what we did. We've been doing so many translating and sending out of surveys that I've been getting some stuff mixed up. So, I may need to double-check on that. But I'm fairly certain that if they have multiple kids, they got multiple surveys.
This is Yolanda. I think you're correct. I have two students and I received two surveys.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Mr. Rand, as a statistician, what is the number, ideal number to for return for a valid survey?
I mean, offhand, you know, if you get a 10% return rate, that's going to be pretty good. Like, for what we've gotten, I feel pretty comfortable that we have a good sample size with the staff survey that we can feel pretty confident. Honestly, 710 surveys at a, you know, 15,000, 18,000 families is not as many as I would have liked. And I was kind of on the fence about presenting that data because I don't think it's a large enough sample size to really draw conclusions, but I also wanted to be transparent and provide the information that we did have so far, especially considering that the family surveys don't include the paper pencil responses that would have, I think, a big effect on the learning packets and the technology opinions.
Thank you.
And so, Dave Rand, this is Dr. Stacy Aker. When are they due via paper back to you?
So, we've asked folks to finish or postmark them by the 15th. I'll be honest, we, we'll check our online response rates and also, I will get with my team members to get an idea of how many paper pencil we have coming in. But basically, if there's still a significant amount of responses online or that are coming in paper pencil, then we'll continue to collect those. We wanted to give folks kind of a due date to kind of give a sense of urgency so folks would do it. But at the same time, I think we can glean some information from the draft results and be a little more patient with putting together a final report.
Great. Well, thank you so much again for this information. I feel like an update is very important so we can get a pulse to see what we're doing. And I did share that web link online for people who, like me, don't like to send in the paper. Just do it online and call it a day. So, you reminded me. I was like, Yolanda, I thought it was duplicate. I'm like, okay, why am I getting more than one of these? So, it's important to know because it, you know, when you fill it out, it does ask for the school. And I really like the fact that when you go online, you can choose the language. So, therefore, the language barrier that some people may have, if they do it online, there is a dropdown to where they can convert it to the language of their choice. So, I really appreciate that ability to do that.
Yeah, and that's 100%. You know, Lisa Walker, working with my guy Ben Price and working with ELL to get those translated. So, that's a real credit to them.
Well, thank you again so much for those efforts. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rand.
Mr. Rand, this is Yolanda Brownlee Page. Have you ever thought about attaching a note to say that you have five children, you need to fill out one for each kid? Because similarly, there's two, and oh, I'm just doing one, and that's it.
Yeah, so there was a set of directions that went with them. I don't recall exactly if it said, you know, you're getting one for each kid. But yeah, I think that that's definitely something we could have could have been more clear on.
Mr. Rand, I can share that we actually did say that with the instructions said for parents. If they had more than one children, we would, or one child, we would encourage them to fill out multiple surveys because their experiences for each child, you know, from classroom to classroom, grade level to grade level, or school to school, can be different. And so, those are important to us as well. So, we did ask them in the top of the instructions to do that, if they would.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to share. And I am even more happy that I'm not asking you for any money this evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We're now ready to accept the first read for the student code of conduct. Dr. Faust, are you there?
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education accept for a first read proposed changes to the student code of conduct as submitted by Lisa Garcia Stewart. And is recommended by myself, superintendent of schools.
Good evening. Good evening, Board. Madam President, Dr. Faust, would you share my screen? Good evening. I'm going to take you through the proposed recommendations for the first read. There isn't any approval this evening, and I know you have it in front of you. And just want to highlight part of code of conduct as the board's policy is to maintain a safe and respectful learning environment. In front of you or online, you have the proposed recommendations that are highlighted, and then omissions or edits are included with a strike through a particular word or sentences. The table contents just upfront will be updated after the final we begin to adjust the document and omit and add additional edits. Then it's sort of numbers, the pages, they get, the number of pages get off. So, again, there's no action today. And at the conclusion, I look forward to feedback and any recommendations. If you need to continue to look over the document, you can certainly email me. The first page that is updated is to include the current board member names. So, that we added that. On page eight, we added excellence is required. And then, Mrs. Drew did send me the updated code of conduct letter to the parents addressed by the board president on page eight. So, that was included in the new draft and wanted to make sure the board's aware that we have that as well. As we move through pages nine through 11, those are the character traits that align with the work of the social emotional learning, our trauma-sensitive and resilient schools initiative. Many counselors and teachers spent a long time working on this last year as we presented it to you and maintains the framework of the current work that we're doing. Again, no recommendations on page 12. That's consistent common language with our trauma-sensitive and resilient schools initiative as we move into phase two of our implementation and continue to focus on intervention and developmentally appropriate responses. As we move into proposed recommendations for class one. Class one on pages 13 to 14 to define what class one is and the offenses. There are no current recommendation or changes. Class one responses, as we think about developmentally appropriate responses, we have proposed to the board moving the following responses are options. But again, moving toward that more progressive disciplinary approach and focus on student interventions and reteaching appropriate behavior and spending time with students that need support as we do for core content, that we want to spend equal amount of time teaching the expectations and appropriate behavior focusing back on the character traits and appropriate plan for students. Class two offenses begin on page 17 with no recommendation, but on class two responses, again, focusing on that progressive disciplinary approach. So, we focus more on interventions and appropriate plans for students and reteaching the behavior. Three offenses begin on page 21 with no recommendations, but as you move through class three, page 23, proposed moving from class four to class three, setting off falsely or misuse of disastrous alarm or equipment. proposed moving from class four to class three, setting off falsely or misuse of disastrous alarm or equipment, tension of alarms or like warning devices, use a firecracker fireworks or firecrackers or explosive, sale distribution, moving those back to class three, which still could result in an expulsion up to 186 days in class three. Again, when you
Can I ask you something now or you want me to? Okay, why did you move them?
Those were in class four and go ahead. I don't think I heard you, Mrs. Brownlee Page.
No, I, I just said, what was the rationale for moving?
Those are, were in class four and an automatic expulsion, which is a calendar year. And we were seeing um the setting off of the fire alarms or even if a student brought fireworks with our younger students that were a bit explosive or just excited about bringing something or maybe touching the fire alarm by accident and we thought about a long-term expulsion hearing for an seven-year-old and eight-year-old. Um, we want it because that's the automatic response in class four. Class three doesn't um require you to do an automatic expulsion.
Okay, well, can I ask you another question?
Yes, ma'am.
Numbers that would say how often this happened?
I don't have them in front of me, but I certainly can provide them for you. Take note and I can provide to you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely. Page 24, again, we just proposed a recommendation again to think about, especially to Mrs. Brownlee Page's um question, thinking about how we focus on student interventions that are developmentally appropriate for students, early childhood through 12th grade. Class four offenses, um, no recommend, with the exception of moving those two that I just mentioned in class three. And then their responses, again, is an automatic expulsion, but we wanted to make sure um that we included language about a thorough investigation. Um, and then expulsion if appropriate, and then a reentry plan, which is included in all of our responses in each class. Page 40 is a non-discrimination that needed to be updated, and I now have that with the current signatures and individuals in the, those positions. So those are just the short um proposed recommendation. It's only the first read, so no action required at this time.
Maxine, you're on mute. Thank you so much for doing that. We appreciate it. And we can address those others as we have meetings that's going to be upcoming in the future. So clarify, we don't have to approve the first read or we do have to approve the first read? There's no feedback. Okay, thank you.
You, you do, you do accept it for first read. That way it's, it's out there to the public that it's been presented for first read.
I make a motion that we accept the first read of the student code of conduct.
Becca, Sarandy.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the first read for the code of conduct. Are there any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Westfall, could you please do the roll call vote?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Yolanda Brownlee Page.
Yolanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valina Nguyen.
Valina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now ready for the report for the next one.
I'd ask that the Kansas Board of Education accept as an informational item, a report on the summer school plan as submitted by Dr. Kelly Charles, Executive Director, Dr. Troy Pitch, Instructional Improvement Officer, Ms. Kristen Scott, Director of ESL Migrant and Interim Instructional Improvement Officer, Dr. Kim Shaw, Instructional Improvement Officer, and Dr. Thought at least she had Miguel's in here too, sorry, um, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent Stings.
Good evening, Board. Madam President, Dr. Faust. I'm going to share my screen. Um, and while I do, I just um want to share that I'm most honored to have many colleagues with us with me sharing this presentation tonight on what we have developed for our summer school plan. Dr. Kelly Charles was um ever so efficient in getting started and thinking about summer school back in January. However, as we all know, we have a new world of normal. And so now we um have had to create a whole new plan, which um is going to involve summer school being provided in online fashion, just as our current method of instruction is being delivered. Um, what we wanted to share with you today is just what we have developed across the various levels for um a summer school offering for our students. Summer school is going to be um offered June 1st through June 25th on Monday through Thursday. We find that kids in the summer really could use a day off, and to be quite honest, sometimes our staff um need that day as well. For each of our areas, as we go through, we're going to talk about the who, which you're going to see over here on the far left. And then I'll be scrolling down as I and my colleagues speak and share about the plans will come down to the what. And I believe um this might be more easily seen in your documents, but I just wanted to give a preface as to how we'll go through each of these um levels of support for our students. To begin, we are going to be looking at early childhood students. And we're going to first talk about who are those students and staff and what is it that we're, we are proposing to um engage these students in over the month of June. We're looking at students who are going to be for, who are currently four years old, who are going to be transitioning to kindergarten and currently show um a need for additional support in literacy and numeracy. Uh, we're, we're proposing a teacher, a teacher to student ratio of one to 20, as well as having special education teachers available and perhaps counselor or behavior mental health um interventionist available as a support for teachers in case um additional needs come up, as well as to um provide lessons and support for students. The what is going to be a continuation of the continuous learning plan that we have in place right now. And that has been delivered through um creation of packets for those students who have not been able to access technology. Um, and in those packets were weekly choice boards where there were choices for students and parents to engage in activities to support their learning. We're creating um new ones for the summer months for them to be able to engage in. But then those that are selected that need more intensive support will be connected with a teacher online. And those that also have technology to be able to access that teacher will continue to um engage in weekly activities, but also have a, a day-to-day engagement with, with teachers. As well as the counselor and the behavioral mental health specialist supporting them and lessons that will support them socially and emotionally. For elementary, we're going to be, or for elementary, uh, each school is going to be targeting to the 20% of their highest need students. Um, and for, and those students that also have access to technology. At elementary, we're looking at a student to teacher ratio of one to 30 and will continue to have support from ESL as well as counselors or social workers. The continuation of the continuous learning plan is um what we are, we are proposing with the creation of choice boards, where teachers will further develop those face-to-face lessons around those choice board items, provide ongoing feedback to work that's been submitted online, on the online platforms of CSO or Google Classroom. We'll have the co-couns, um counselors available to help provide weekly social emotional lessons as well as um continue to develop primary choice board, choice boards. Um, students with no technology in both early childhood and elementary, we are creating a summer um choice board packet so that all students will continue to have that opportunity to be engaged in activities that will keep them academically engaged over the summer if they so choose, in addition to those 20% that will be engaged with the teacher. All right, Ms. Scott, you want to go with middle school?
Good evening, everyone. Madam President, Dr. Faust, board members. I'm going to talk about middle school first, and then I will go over to the column and address ESL and migrant. So at middle school, we are going to address students who are failing ELA in math. And that we will have a ratio of one to 30 teach, one teacher to 30 students. We will also have special education teachers as well as ESL teachers available. For our students who are at the upper level of proficiency, we will use the platform of edgenuity. It's a program that's used at high schools right now, but we have the option to use it for our middle school students. And so we thought this would be the best time to try it and pilot it to see how our middle school students perform on edgenuity. Then students who are reading at the lower level two and below, we will offer Khan Academy. The campus will assign the students to the appropriate programs and designate the courses that the work, uh, the students need to work on. The campus will assign the teachers to the groups of students. And for those students who um either do not have access to technology, who need um this work, or students who don't need summer school, they're not eligible. We still want to provide choice board packets for those students. And that will be distributed in the same manner as um elementary and early childhood. For ESL and migrant, all of our migrant students will receive what we're going to call a literacy pack. The migrant advocates um selected books, um different activities and workbooks for all migrant students pre-K through 12. And then select students who do not have access to internet. We know that this is a problem for a lot of our EL families. Um, they're not able to participate right now with the work packets because the current work packets that we distributed early on weren't differentiated for EL students. So we are going to pilot, we've had a group of teachers and ESL instructional coaches working on how can we get content into the hands of our students who don't have access to um wifi? We are going to download content onto thumbnails and we are going to push out content onto iPads that students can access on the device without having um internet access. And then for also our migrant students who have traditionally participated in our migrant leadership academy, we are going to continue with that migrant leadership academy, but it will be a virtual academy. Dr. Pitch, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Chris. Uh, members of the board, with your permission at the high school, we would like to focus on credit recovery with our ninth through 12th graders with the goal of entering into the next school year um having reduced or completely eliminated any students starting the year uh with a credit deficiency. Currently, we use an edgenuity platform, which is a web platform uh that provides coursework for our students. At the outset of the coronavirus, we were given a special opportunity in which edgenuity opened up coursework in all four cores to all of our students until July 31st. So with that said, uh, our principals are in charge with their leadership teams of identifying students who are credit deficient and reaching out to them in this interim before the summer school term, identify those students and get them prepared to enroll in edgenuity courses. Now, we are asking for eight staff members, teachers on each campus, that would be two per core, to allow for these students to receive help uh and tutoring when they get stuck. In the edgenuity course process, a student proceeds along this coursework. Um, when they hit an impasse, edgenuity will not let them go any further, and so they will need some instructional support at that point. Furthermore, uh, we also plan to employ varsity tutoring, which was a tutoring bundle of hours that we bought earlier on this year to support mathematics instruction. I've been in conversations with varsity tutoring and they've done two things for us. Number one, they are going to honor all of our hours that we won't be able, that we hadn't been able to use because of the coronavirus all the way through December 31st. Secondly, they have stated that we will be creative with our accounts so that we can assign minutes of online tutoring to students. So the tutors will be available to students after hours after our summer school teachers go home. We are asking for two counselors that will support uh record-keeping and entering information into our infinite campus, managing uh that type of data. Um, our principals are already on staff, and so we're going to um go ahead and allow them to, to help support the process of the enrollment with, with their student or with, starting with their leaders. And yes. Sorry, I had some background noise there that kind of threw me off.
All right, Dr. Charles, are you ready?
I am ready. Good evening, everyone. So I'd like to share with you all our plan for extended school year. And so extended school year, we are looking at um offering it to the 420 students that have been determined to be eligible for ESY. So these are mostly students who are served in our life skills classroom and our autism classroom, um, and even students who are in some of our behavior support classrooms. And this is based on our students' IEP um data. And so for our teaching staff, we're looking at a one to 10 ratio. And in addition to instruction, we are also um looking at having related service providers to be able to come in and offer therapy as well, be that speech, language, um OTPT and so on. And so um our students um will have an opportunity to focus on their student goals as outlined on their IEP. We will have a weekly calendar of lessons. Um, we will also um have live weekly lesson opportunities where students can engage directly with their teachers. We'll also have lessons focused on individual student goals and again, as well as therapy based on IEP goals.
And Dr. Pitch mentioned this, but we would want to make sure that it's clear to all that principals and teachers are currently working to identify the students that um they feel are in most need of attending an online summer school um program. And I'm actually reaching out to families, um should, should know by the end of this week which parents um have confirmed that their children will indeed participate so that we can begin um setting up all the platforms for staff and students in the next few weeks to be ready by June 1. Are there any questions from the board for us this evening?
I don't have any. Sounds like it's a good plan to get the students on the right path.
I have one. Help me remember how we deal with homeless students.
So with the homeless students and Ms. Um, Garcia Stewart, you can jump in as well. Or Mr. Dr. Charles, I know that as students um come into the district and enroll, they are assigned to a school. And so they would have the same opportunity to participate in summer school as any other student. If, and if they were to be identified as part of those most in need, we would certainly reach out to find out how we can make sure to keep them engaged in the summer, in the, in the um summer school offering.
That's correct, Dr. Shaw. So, uh, Dr. When we're still continuing to enroll students and some that um while the eviction order um is not eviction orders in place, we're still experiencing families that are being evicted, and so we're still continuing to support them. And if there are students that are identified that meet the criteria, we'll provide transportation and remove all those barriers to make sure they're able to participate and um make sure they have access to all the other amenities that they need. And when I mean transportation, if there was a need to pick up um technology or learning package, just as we did for the distant learning, we'll make sure that we provide that for our families.
Thank you.
Ms. Page, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did. If I'm a parent and maybe I feel that I know the criteria that you set, but if I felt that my child needed a little bit more, is it possible that he or she could be enrolled in the summer program or you have to meet these categories?
I can speak for middle school. These um programs are available for students right now. So if a student wanted to or needed to, a parent could um put them on these programs because all students will be able to keep their technology through the summer.
Okay. Thank you.
I would agree. Um, our goal is to also have the packets available online for families in case they prefer not to come and pick up a packet when we do deployment. Therefore, they would have that access online. And I've heard from several teachers, um whether they choose to work summer school or not, they, they plan to continue to stay in connection with their students. But I would hope that parents would definitely be reaching out to their teachers and their um principals um if they do have a desire to have additional support and the buildings will work with them to provide that.
Ms. Clark?
No, that was actually um Ms. Ms. Brownlee Page hit on, hit the nail on the head for my question as well. I wondered about those students that are, you know, they're, they're doing decent, but how do you keep? but how do you keep them moving? They've been out of the classroom for, for a while. And so how do we continue to give them resources through the summer and make sure that they're targeted resources and preparing them for what's next?
And, and one more question. I, I know you said it's available, but will we send them something to say? If you'd like to, you have access to this, and you can go to this site and click on and then go from there?
Certainly, I'm sure, well, we will be asking the principals to push out this information through their brighter blast. And we'll also be working with our fabulous communications department to ensure that we can push out via all means of social media to let them know that the packets will be available for their children.
Thank you, sweetie. I need a motion for us to approve and accept the online summer school plan for 2020.
Is so moved, Janie?
It's been moved and seconded that we accept and approve the online summer school plan for 2020. Are there any additional questions or comments? Susan, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
I think I missed Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Sorry.
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Nice work. Thank you.
We're now ready for the KCK Public Library Report.
Ms. Drew, I, I hope you don't mind, but can we take a short break, please? For five minutes?
Yes, ma'am. We have a motion that we will break. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. We take a break. It is now 10 minutes after eight. We will resume at 8:15. Motion passed. Is everyone back? We will now resume our meeting. So now we're ready for a, for the report by Public Libraries by Carol Levers, Director.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Faust. I've handed you, I, I mean, I've submitted a handout. And I'm just going to go through that. If you have any questions, you can just direct that to me. This is the April stats. And on the first page, I shared with you our e-community advertising. We've advertised through our Facebook and Instagram of all our programs that we are offering to the public. And at the bottom, in a scale, you can see what we've, we actually sent out 314,213 ads. 97,152 people reacted to those ads. And about 3,020 went further to explore from that ad of what we still have to offer. And that's just through our Facebook and Instagram. Our e-card sign up for the month of April. We signed, that's addition to the, in, in March, we signed up an addition, additional 449 e-cards. And April alone, we signed up new 629 e-cards. So you can see most of our services, with the exception of Tumble Books in the next column, of which is often heavily used by the schools. That's why we down on Tumble Books. You know, last year, April 2019, we had 4,880 clicks on Tumble Book. And this April, we only had 440 because most of them shared, you know, with the school online and of course, our, our story time. But our services, as far as Hoopla, and that's the e, the movies, that rose to 7,825 checkouts just for the month of April. And the rest you can see is right there for your result. In mid-April, we increased or allowed the Hoopla checkout to our patrons. Usually, we check out 15, and our, our patrons ask us if we could push it up. So we gave them a 20 item a month. So, you know, and, and that was a good thing. Our Canopy checkout also increased to 20 a month for all our patrons. And most of the existing patrons on May 1st, they could not increase existing patrons during mid-month, the mid-month. Page three, you will find our databases usage. EBSCO was the highest. That's the, the ads that we send out. But 32,525 people clicked on EBSCO alone. News Bank was second with 4,350. And the rest, you could just read down. Our Life Start reference total, we had 12,445 searches for the month of April alone. Mango, the next one is our Mango Languages. That's the highest. That's the reference section of our databases. We had 1,436 sessions in April and 1,442 in March. In comparison with April of 2019, we only had 116 people checking out our languages. And the rest, you could see is, is all there for you to read. Our social media statistics. Our Facebook is really our best communicator. We had advertised 546,828 times on our Facebook. We reached 412,223 people. That's April alone. March of this year was 278,077 patrons in comparison with 103,821 in April 2019. Our Twitter account, we've advertised, I mean, shared 58,650 articles. And tweets of, of April of this year, March of this year was 59,218 in comparison with 38,613 in April of 2019. Instagram, as you can see, we've reached 6,473 patrons. And we had items on our Instagram, 7,149 for the month of April. April 19 was more. We've kind of went down on Instagram. And Facebook is still our leading social media advertisers. The last one is our online programming. As part of our online presence, we began some online programming in April. And our live story times occurs Monday through Friday at 10 o'clock on our Facebook page. And the actual story time remains on the Facebook for 24 hours because that's the contract we have with the authors. They don't want it on our, on our Facebook too long. So at least patrons can go back within 24 hours if they've missed the video and can review them or just view them repeatedly if they'd like. Our first week, we had 4,487 households click on to our daily story time. The second week, we had 3,290. Our third week in April, we had 3,047. And the last week, we had 3,917. We've also created online programming, online programming blog that's on kckplprograms.wordpress.com. Our staff shares posts and videos about crafts, STEM activities for kids, videos, and other things patrons can do at home. We had about 976 family views on our new programming blog in April. And right now, our staff is working to increase the online program that we are offering. They have plans to include more interactive elements such as online book and movie discussions and classes. We're looking, and we are, just, I mean, if you have any questions, I can, you know, answer those. But I want to share with you that staff is working hard in providing me with a proposal to share with the board as to a staggered opening when the time arrives. And I know it's not now because we're waiting on the health department to kind of give us sort of a green light. But we were thinking, if, if the board approves, that may be in stage three, yellow zone, that we could just have the managers come back to prepare the buildings because we have to prepare social distancing for staff. And also, you know, change the computer setup because we have to, you know, prepare that when we open at stage five. That's the green zone. And that could be July, June 17, if we follow the health department's 14 days increment. But I just wanted to get some guidelines. If the board wants me to bring a proposal to the next board meeting, because that will be the week that the health department will be, most probably, if things, you know, go in the right direction, move us to the yellow zone.
It's true. I would appreciate if, if Carol and her staff would put together what they think would work well and bring it to us to, to look at so that we know what she's talking about before we put it out for the public.
Yes, thank you. I was going to suggest that since we are scheduled for our next meeting on May 26, and if that proposal can be brought to us so that we can view it and look at it. And we doesn't, we don't necessarily have to make a decision at that particular time, but at least give us a format, at least what we will be able to know. And I want to thank you for what you all are doing. I have had an opportunity to listen online to some of the stories. And they are very interesting and very enlightening for our young people. Everything through, you know, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, it keeps people connected. Thank you.
Yeah, just one more thing. And we had a request from South Africa, of all places. One of the universities, they were looking for an article, a very recent article that was in a, some education journal, and they couldn't find it there. And was reaching out to see whether we could do and find it. And my reference librarians went to work and they found it within four hours. And we just emailed it to, and that university professor is ecstatic and just thanked us for doing that. So, you know, they, the, the staff is hard at work and, you know, they, they just want to get back. But unfortunately, we have to adhere to the rules and, you know, make sure that everybody is safe. But we'd like to do it in a staggered, we, we're not going to just open until the green light is completely for the public. But, but because we have so much preparations to do, we have about a thousand boxes of books waiting for us to process. And that alone, people waiting for their holes and stuff, we need all that time, you know, just to, to get ready to, to be able to present. We were thinking of curbside holds, you know, once we start staggering open. But I will do the proposal for you and, and present it at the next board meeting.
And Carol, would you please tell the staff how much I enjoy opening up my Twitter every day and seeing their recommendations on books to read and movies to watch? And just little tidbits, they make it personal, but it says, so-and-so at Turner suggests you check this out. It's really reaching out to the community and saying, hey, we still, we're still here. We care about you.
Appreciate it. The only thing that we worried about, we, we know that we are the go-to place for people to do the census tracking. And unfortunately, you know, even though we've boosted our Wi-Fi access so that people can go outside to our buildings, but then there's a lot of people that we serve who don't even have phones. We don't even have laptops that can do that. So that is my big concern. But, you know, hopefully, we will, I, I wish they can push the census for a couple of months because, you know, we, that's where we are needed most right now, you know?
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're now ready for the Human Resources Report and Operation Recommendations?
I'd ask, I'd ask the Board of, I'd ask that the Kansas City, let me sure I'm not up and viewed. As the Kansas City Board of Education approved the Public Library Human Resources Report and Library Operations Recommendations as submitted by Mrs. Carol Levers, Director of Libraries, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that the Kansas City Public Library Human Resources Report and Operation Recommendations be approved. Are there any questions, comments? Susan, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdina Nguyen?
Valdina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager?
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I'd ask that the Kansas City Board of Education approved the payment of bills for the public libraries as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the payment of bills for the public libraries. Are there any questions or comments?
Ms., thank you, Ms. Drew. Just GP Ms. Levers, what's the, about $3,000 cost of food costs? What's that for, since the library's not open? You're muted. You're muted.
I'm so sorry. What was the question again?
Just a funeral. What's about, there's about a $3,000 cost for food. What's that for, since the library hasn't been open?
Food for April? Oh, it could be. I, I don't have it right on me. It could be.
It says $1,070 for Price Chopper, $999 for SunFresh. So there's another one.
And it could be an item or invoice that just came through this month. And it could have been for some of our programs in March, April, that just came through that we paid.
Okay, thank you.
It's, yeah.
Therefore, Dr. Win, did we vote?
Not yet.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So therefore, it has been passed that we, the payment of the bills for the public libraries. We're now ready. We're now ready for our consent agenda.
We haven't, no, we haven't voted yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's why I was asking.
Susan.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes. Thank you.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all so much. Now we're ready for our consent agenda. Any questions or comments?
Madam President, I'd like to set aside item D like donut, F like friend, and G like go.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus D, F, and G.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda with the removal of item D, F, and G. Are there any other questions or comments?
Was F having to do with contracts?
D, F, and G.
No, I'm asking, what was F?
F has to do with contracts.
Okay, do we need to discuss that in executive session?
First, we need to approve this, that we accept it, and then we can decide where we will discuss, when we will discuss it and where. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, Susan, could you do the roll call vote, please?
Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Nguyen, you want to address item D?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move that to executive session to protect privacy with possible, with possible action to follow. And Greg, let me the right words.
Yeah, it'd just be for the personnel exception. Are you wanting to do that executive session now or do you want to move it down to where the other executive sessions are?
Move it down to where the other executive sessions are.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we moved the human resources report into executive session. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. I'm sorry, do the roll call vote. I forgot we're not in person.
It was who seconded, I'm sorry?
Randy.
Okay. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, no.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Now for item F?
F. These are open contracts. I don't know what Ms. Brownlee Page wanted to know.
Well, what I wanted to know, there are four different, I guess, we have four different contracts. And correct me, because I know someone will, and they all have different prices. So we don't go with the lowest bid, we take on these four different contracts, just for clarity.
This is Elizabeth Morris. I can speak to that. And so the reason there's different agencies that we use is they provide different levels of nursing licensure. So for example, Favorite Healthcare Staffing mostly provides registered nurses with a few licensed practical nurses. The other agencies provide LPNs as well as CNA services. And so that's why we have the different agency.
Because I know with most of the contracts, you go with the lowest bid, that's what they always tell us. But I just saw the four and you have all the different prices, some are high, some are low. So just trying to figure that one out.
That was my concern, Ms. Morris. Nice meeting you.
You too.
I believe the first stat and the Craig also provided registered nurses at $38. So I would not be in favor of hiring the registered nurse from Favorite or from Maxim because they charge $47, $48.
And I would say Favorite Healthcare Staffing is probably the most established registered nurse agency in Kansas City. I've worked with them for over 20 years. The other agencies are smaller and don't have a very large pool of actual registered nurses for us to pool from. Favorite Healthcare Staffing provides long-term and sub nurses for several districts in Kansas City on both sides of the state line. They are the primary agency used.
So then my other question is, how many nurses do we employ and how often do we need their services? And what was the, what was the cost last year?
We had five long-term agency subs that staffed our district this year. And then we use them for daily substitute needs.
And please, how many nurses do we employ full-time?
Full-time, we had five at the time of the closure of schools.
From the agencies or independent hired, long-term subs, we never did have any full-time nurses?
We had, we have about 48 long-term, I'm sorry, permanent employees.
Okay, so we have permanent 48 and we needed five, how much did we spend on these contracts, nursing contracts? And let me ask, let me say why I'm asking. Because once again, if it costs us to hire a full-time permanent nurse than to pay $48 an hour, that's what I'm trying to get to. Do we have those numbers to compare?
I do not have those numbers for you this evening.
Okay. Well, then, I have a challenge with us always contracting out when we could have a full-time person. So, thank you.
So I think I can add a little bit context to this. And Dr. Nguyen, we can definitely get you the comparisons over the course of the past few years. I pulled this information from previous agenda items that were brought from special education. It seemed as if the nurse contracts were brought in the past by special education. And so I had passed these on to Elizabeth so that she would be able to vet through them. Two nurses, if I'm not mistaken, but we'll get that information for you. Those services are paid through the co-op because two of those nurses actually service two of our students in Piper, in Bonner Springs. And so again, those are two nurses that are in two special education classrooms.
And thank you, and I understand, we, many times, I think a trend is to contract out because then there are just the hourly rate. You don't have to pay benefits and things like that. So historically, I understand, and I understand where you got the contracts from. Because as we saw with special ed, we've got six, 10 contracts instead of hiring directly our own.
Directly.
Right. So just trying to look forward and think about those, perhaps cost-saving things. Because, just because we approve these for contract does not mean we have to use them. But that, it's kind of like, you know, if we don't always have to go to that $48 an hour, then, then, then we not using, not using that much money. So I understand. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we approve the renewal for the contracts of the outside agencies for the nursing services for 2020, 2021 school year.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the renewal of contracts for outside agencies, nursing services for 2021 school year. Susan, would you please do the roll call vote?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen for G.
Here, I think it was stated that there was an update for other bids, and I don't see the other bids.
Good evening, Madam President and Board. This is Doug Clements, Director of Physical Properties. Over copies of the other proposals, we actually received, I contacted four representatives of the major turf companies, AsterTurf, Shaw, SprintTurf, and FieldTurf. And each of them gave me, in all cases, at least two, in one case, three. So we had nine different things to look at here. So I apologize if you don't have that information in front of you. SprintTurf was considerably lower than the others. The, at the end analysis, about 40,000 lower than the next lowest bid and 55 to the next bidder after that. And then everything else was considerably higher. And I can give you, send those over if you'd like, those proposals. All of these were proposals using contract purchasing pricing.
Thank you so much. Any comments or other questions?
My question to, I guess, both Mr. Clements and Mr. Covington. How does this then fit into our total budget for athletic upgrades or basketball floor upgrades? You know, again, as the total puzzle?
The replacement of the turf fields are in our capital budget. And we are budgeting to replace one a year. Because all of them are at the end of their existing life when we put them in. So we are prioritizing them at the most needed ones get replaced first. And so that, next year, there would be another line in the capital budget for replacement of the next school's field. It's part of the meal, in the meal levy of the $10.5 million that we get every year. There's a line item in that budget for the replacement of the fields.
So help me understand, what's the total amount, please? And which budget is it coming out of?
The capital budget. I mean, we get 10.5 million.
I understand that. I'm talking about 1920 or 2021?
Both. It's in 1920 and 2021. This money is in the 1920 budget.
That's what I'm asking.
Yes, in the 1920 budget.
I didn't make it clear. The 1920, 1920 budget and the total amount of this is what?
This particular replacement?
It's $4.37. It's a little more than what we had budgeted, but our roofing budget, it was a little less than what we had budgeted in that line. And so we moved the money down to cover the increased cost of the field.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I make a motion that we accept the bid for the replacement of the artificial playing surface at the Lawrence Stadium at J.C. Harmon High School.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the bid for replacement of artificial playing surface at Lawrence Stadium at J.C. Harmon High School. Any other questions or comments? Susan, would you do the roll call vote?
Maxine Drew.
Come give me some water.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you. I need a motion for us to approve payment of bills.
I make a motion that we pay our bills.
Will someone second it, please?
Second, this is Randy.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the payment of the bills. Susan, would you please do roll call vote?
I need questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, questions?
I have a question, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Covington, how do we, I know we have the meal contract. How do we pay for our other food items with a credit card?
Yeah, it depends. We have a district credit card that if there are like recurring purchases that we just place those orders against without having to do purchase orders each time.
For, for the food, for the?
Yes.
1,000 meals.
Say again, ma'am?
This for the, like, the 2,000 meals?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because, I mean, there's a, I mean, it says Hannah's Donuts, $12,000.
That, that was a, it picked up the wrong vendor number.
Oh.
Ms. Janie asked me that question. I didn't print out my response to Janie. I would send that to you, ma'am, but it's not Hannah's Donuts.
Oh, okay.
It's actually, this is Wayne Carell. It's actually the Visa card. There's, there's a reporting, I hate to use the word glitch, but it's grabbing a different line than it should. No check issued to Hannah's Donuts. It was an all-in internal transaction that paid the Visa card. Okay, that makes sense. And we're working on what that glitch or what that reporting error is. But the transaction was an internal transaction to pay the Visa.
Okay. So I guess my question is, and spending, paying six, seven million dollars every two weeks, it's hard to catch each glitch. So I understand that. But prior to us coming to the meetings, if you know of those glitches, could you inform us?
Yes, we will inform you. It's a, you know, it's printed out on a report with multiple transactions. And, you know, in reviewing it, we found it. But we will, you know, make an effort to pay closer attention to what we're sending you to ensure that we're not sending you anything that looks off.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Therefore, it's been moved and seconded. Susan, would you do the roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, you're on.
She's not present. She was not voting. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Alvin Nguyen.
Alvin Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready to look at board policy review for the second read for proposed changes for policy G A A B complaints of discrimination.
I'd ask that the Board, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept for second read proposed changes to board policy G A A B complaints of discrimination as submitted by K A S B, reviewed by legal counsel and as recommended by myself Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
It's been moved. Yolanda, would you repeat what you said?
Did you need it seconded? I'm sorry.
It has not been, the motion has not been made.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
You can make the motion.
I'm here.
You can make the motion.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Thank you. I'm like, I know we needed something.
Except the second re-proposed changes for board policy G A A B complaints of discrimination. Any questions or comments? Susan, would you roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdena Nguyen.
Valdena Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
This is the one I told Greg. He can't let pass. G A A, those changes she made, he cannot.
You're not mute, Mr. Covington.
We hear you.
Thank you.
So let's, we're ready to go to the next one on B.
That one passed. All right.
Hey, what? I'll do you the pleasure of making the motion.
And I said.
House makes his statement.
And I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept the second re-proposed changes to board policy G, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. G A A A, equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination as submitted by K A S B, reviewed by legal counsel and as recommended by myself superintendent of schools with potential modifications by board members.
The motion has, uh, uh, need the motion made to accept second re-proposed for G A A A, equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination.
I think there are some things that we should talk about modifying prior.
I'm gonna make the motion first, please.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions or comments?
I, I have concerns with this one. But it seems like we would not be hiring the best person for the position. We already know that there is a shortage of, um, available people. And I'm concerned that the way this is worded is boxing us into getting the, um, not the most qualified candidate. The area in blue, to me, is very concerning. I, um, have the opinion that it should be removed and just what is remaining in the red that was originally proposed by K A S B should be kept.
Any other comments?
Well, um, excuse me, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Dr. Nguyen.
I find it, uh, very, I would find it very disturbing that, um, one would not want to say strive to maintain equity, that, um, we are talking about equity as a, um, excuse me? I will repeat, um, I find it, um, difficult to understand why one would not want to send a very clear message to, um, our community, to our state, that, um, this district would strive to maintain equitable balance. It does not, um, the state of Kansas does not allow goals, does not allow quotas. But, um, just saying that we strive to maintain equity is a very, um, mild and non-threatening, um, aspiration.
Anyone else?
Uh, this, this is Yolanda, and I'm not sure, I'm not saying that I have the right verbiage. Um, I do have a few concerns with, with that verbiage as well, though. Um, I, I, I know qualified is not the right word, but to, to me, we're looking for the most qualified applicant versus, um, versus the balancing. So those are just my thoughts.
I would recommend that we would remove the part that says, in meeting the district, uh, the administration shall strive to maintain an equitable balance of employees in various general categories of position in regards to et cetera. Because again, I think if this is a concern, I feel like it's a got you. Meaning that where's the discretion of the employees to be able to hire someone who is highly qualified, as it says in our, um, hiring guide, as we encourage them to, the best qualified person for the position. I, again, do not, uh, agree that this statement would allow us to be able to hire, um, with the discretion that's needed. I would recommend the wording to be changed to, in meeting the district's needs, we will hire the best qualified person irregardless of race, color, religion, gender, to include, et cetera. But, and remove the part that says, the administration shall strive to maintain an equitable balance of employees in various general categories of the position. Do I mean?
Okay, thank you.
I have a problem, this is Wanda Brownlee Page. I have a problem with reading it the way Dr. Nguyen has written it. You know, it, it's funny, we always say, it's almost like we, we, you're almost saying, like, we don't want quality. We do want quality people, but we want some equity with that as well. And that doesn't take away from anybody.
Okay, so let's go ahead and just vote and see if it passes.
Well, we have a motion.
The motion was made and it was seconded, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, we were having discussion and now let's go ahead and vote.
Okay, so this is Yolanda, again, before we move into, into the vote, I don't know, does Greg, do we need to talk to Greg on what can be done here? Or is it really what our vote ends up being?
Yeah, so what, what happens right now is you're, you're voting to decide what the third read looks like.
Okay.
Not making a decision on what the actual policy is or not. It really, Dr. Nguyen's motion was to approve it as submitted, which includes both the red and the blue language. So that's the motion you're voting on, is to whether to pass the current version that's up for the second read on for the third read. That's what you're voting on right now.
And if it's voted down, I will make a recommendation on how it should read for the third read.
Okay.
And Greg, can you also, um, clarify that this does not set standards? This, this does not set goals? Does this does not set a quota? It merely is an aspirational, um, statement?
Yeah, I mean, the, the way I read or understand this, the, by the use of the word strive means that that's the desired, I'm gonna use the word goal, but it's not setting a goal, but, but that's the aspirational standard. That's probably a good terminology for the word strive. That's how I would read it.
So would you, would you not rule that it limits one's ability to hire the best qualified based on credentials, experience, work, et cetera?
Well, you, you've got to read the policies together a little bit. Really, your hiring, um, section is section C. The thing that's a little complicated about this is, um, the goal that you're setting in the EEO policy, which is G A A A, is what, what you're desiring to have in terms of what you want the workforce, uh, to like in terms of an equity standpoint. Um, from a hiring standpoint, even though you're striving to do those things, you really can't take those things into account and make an actual hiring decisions. And I don't think the language is suggesting that you are. I'm just saying that you can't do that necessarily from a hiring standpoint because the E O C guidance that says things like, you know, you can't ask somebody what their religion is in an application. So you, you're not going to know whether you're hiring somebody of any particular religion or necessarily, uh, gender, race, or other things when you're making those hiring decisions. And, and the E O C gives pretty clear guidance. You can't even ask those questions until after you've made the decision. Now, obviously, when you go through the hiring process, you're going to be able to look at people and have some understanding of what some of those characteristics might be. Uh, but I don't read that to be, I don't read this, unless I'm misunderstanding the intent behind it. I don't read this necessarily to be a directive in terms of what the hiring part might be. I, I, I just read it to be, um, you know, a policy that, that, um, you're striving to maintain that balance or to obtain that balance is what I read it.
Or to be fair and, fair and impartial.
Here's, here's my concern. Could the administration be accused of not following this guide when they're hiring based upon the language that it's written in?
I don't think so. They get accused of that anyway. If you look at people in the community, that's how they feel. It's not equitable and it's a problem.
And that's why I'm not in favor of having this.
Okay.
Well, again, it's an aspiration.
The definition of strive is to put forth an effort. That's all you're saying. Put forth an effort. But then the waters are muddy, cause, you know, Greg, you gotta be more clear. Now, it sounds like you all have already talked about this, because Mr. Covington said, we can't let this happen. So come on, what is the ruling? What do you say?
I, I haven't talked to anybody about this, so let's be clear about that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, and vote and see if it passes. Susan, we, the motion made has been seconded. Could you please do the roll call vote?
Uh, yes. Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, no.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdena Nguyen.
Valdena Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, no.
So the motion fails.
So Dr. Yeager, you were going to propose?
Yes, I make a motion that we accept the policy as modified. Um, in meeting the district's need, we will hire the most qualified person for the position regardless of race, color, religion, sex, gender, et cetera.
For the third read?
Yes.
Could I get it seconded, please?
What motion is she making?
Susan, could you repeat it back, please?
I don't think I can.
Okay, Stacy, Dr. Yeager, could you repeat it one more time? So make sure that we have it, because I was writing and, and I missed it.
Um, I'll just shorten it. Um, in meeting the district's needs, we will hire the mo, the most qualified person for.
Most qualified person, whatever.
Well, in, in regard of, and then the rest of that sentence, race, color, religion, sex, gender, et cetera. Is, am I wording it right?
As a third read.
I don't know. Do we need to call all of that out?
I don't, I don't think we may need to. Just to shorten it, we could just say, in meeting the district's needs, we will hire the most qualified person.
I, I don't know.
Or it may not need to be modified at all. Just take that section out and just put the, and leave the red section as recommended by K A S B. Okay, I'm, sorry, Susan. I would modify my motion or make the motion that we remove the blue wording and leave the recommendation that K A S B made.
Point of order, you don't need that motion since you defeated the first motion.
Okay, thank you.
But also, I would like for full disclosure, can Mr. Covington explain his, um, comments, please?
Well, this is not the right time for us to, to discuss that.
We are on this, I mean, it was very overt.
But it was made appropriately.
Go, hang, can I ask a ruling on that?
What ruling in terms of what?
That, that whether it's appropriate for me to ask Mr. Covington to explain his outcry on the way of not muting his, um, mic.
Well, first, we need to make sure that we go through with our, with the motion that Dr. Yeager is submitting.
Not necessarily, because it was defeated.
Well, you still have to have, you still have to have a couple of things. One, you've got to have a motion to have something to approve for the third read, whatever that ends up being. Um, I don't know that there's anything properly in front of the body to address Mr. Covington right now, because it's just, in terms of the order, in terms of what the agenda is, certainly could ask him the question, but I, you know, I think that's up to the chair in terms of how the court of the meeting goes at this point.
Okay.
So do I need to restate my motion?
We need clarity on that.
Yes, okay, so I, uh, my motion is that we remove the complete blue section and leave the recommended changes as K A S B has in red.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions? Any comments? Susan, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
No.
Uh, Valdena Nguyen.
Valdena Nguyen, no.
And Stacy Ager.
Stacy Ager, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And again, I recommend that we go ahead and move through because we have a lot of things that we need to cover tonight. So therefore, we're ready for D, I'm sorry, C, which is the second read for for the next board policy.
And I said the Kansas City Board of Education accept for second re-proposed changes to board policy G A C C, recruitment and hiring as submitted by K A S B, reviewed by legal counsel and as recommended by myself superintendent of schools.
I need a motion, please.
Still moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept changes to board policy G A T C, recruitment and hiring. Are there any questions or comments?
I have a question. Um, currently, when, when we're hiring someone, aren't we already doing a comprehensive background check prior to offering them employment? Or could, could you, could you help me understand why it's added to this one?
We've had three cases, and correct me if I'm wrong, where we have individuals, we found out after the fact. So something got lost. So we need to make sure we keep saying that. Cause, uh, the gentleman, I think, well, I, no, I can't say that. We had some cases. Somehow they got through the crack. So I don't know what happened, but we need to reiterate that again, that we make sure we do extensive background checks. To me, because that shouldn't have happened.
Can I just say that we do the background checks and it actually shows up on your guys' board report and you can actually see exactly the background checks we do and the social media check. You're right, there was a problem last year that has been rectified. It was a social media check.
It was just one?
Just one.
It was more than one.
I don't know which one you're talking about, but I just wanted to clarify. Now, report.
Okay, but we do have some issues.
And, and also, um, it says it must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position and simultaneously be the best qualified on education train, et cetera. Um, help me clarify what is meant by, okay, so there mean the qualifications, but there is not certified? Is, could you help me with the intent of this being added?
The intent, if that is, if there are some certifications required, then they have to have that certification when they are employed. And the other speaks for itself. I think it mirrors exactly what your concern was on the last policy, that we get the best qualified.
Dr. Yeager?
Okay.
Uh, this is Janie. I just have one question and maybe Ms. Tishman can answer it for me. Does this mean that if we don't have any applicants that meet certifications, that we cannot apply for a waiver from the state?
Do you want to answer that?
Apply for a waiver from the state, yes.
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Yes, we can, we can apply for a waiver from the state. And we have to do that in certain cases, as we know.
But will this, will this change make it so that we cannot?
Yeah, the way it's written, I mean, I would, I, I don't have it in front of me, guys. I don't know exactly what the wording is, but, um, that would probably be a concern, of course. The way it is written, it says applicants must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position. The way it is written, it says applicants must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position and simultaneously be the best qualified based on education, training, experience, and ability to fulfill the posted requirements of the position. So, Janie, I think you were saying sometimes we have to have them do the temporary certifications? Is that what you were saying?
Well, it's like this year, several, we went to the state to get waivers for several of our sped instructors. And occasionally, we have to get a waiver for someone to teach out of their content area, because we can't find anyone to, to fulfill that position. Will this, uh, policy, inserting this in the policy, make it so that we cannot do that if necessary? Or is it just, it won't affect it at all? That's my question.
That is not the intent of the policy. Um, and because we have a lot of specially special ed, uh, we couldn't have a hundred fifty vacancies. And because that waiver is a, um, option, it cannot be used as a deterrent. So, um, I would say no, it does not deter, um, hi- hiring the, the most qualified.
Okay, that was just my question.
But I think it would need.
I think that, I think that if you have applied for a waiver and you obtain the waiver, that that would make the person minimally qualified for the position. Would be how I would understand it.
But if we read it to the letter and it says simultaneously, then technically, we will be violating our own policy? Greg?
Yeah.
That's what it seems like it's written as, because then it.
Well, I think, I think you got two different clauses there. I think the first clause is the applicant must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position. And the second clause is that they simultaneously be the best qualified on education, training, experience, and ability to fulfill those requirements of the position. And that would be in the applicant pool itself, so, um, you'd be comparing the other applicants to each other. As I read this, is how you would do it. Does that answer your question?
Kinda.
Yeah. Well, it seems like to me, it might be a little bit in conflict with trying to get the best and then balancing it as well.
Because I, I think traditionally, we don't apply for the waiver until we hire the person. So they wouldn't have the waiver until they were an employee and we applied to the state. Ms. Tishman, is that how it works?
Um, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, that's true. So, you know, you guys, if you, you know, whatever you write is what we'll end up doing. Um, if there is, if it's written in such a way that limits, then that may create a, a problem for us in how we fill positions.
And so are you saying that if it says they have to have a certification for the posi- position, um, they need to be hired first in order for us to apply for the certification?
I'm trying to, say it again, Stacy.
I said, so to clarify, when we hot, if we need a waiver, we have to first hire the person and then send the waiver in?
Well, right, I mean, I think that's exactly right, um, because, you know, they're not our employee.
Okay, but in, in reading this, it says that they must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position, but then we're saying that they have to be the best qualified based on their education. So if they're not the, if they meet it, but they're not the best, they won't get hired. That's, is, am I misinterpreting that?
Well, I think that's what it could mean, yes.
Well, the way we got it now, sometimes they're not always the best. They still get hired.
But that, to me, that's, it's setting it up for failure on, on getting an, an adequate applicant.
Now, we go from adequate to qualified. That's rough.
We're trying to get the best qualif- and we all want the best for our students.
I agree.
Now, you, you know, you, you can, you can chew it up and spit it out. So what I'm seeing is that you are, um, looking, have already discussed how you're going to, um, question the either intent or the outcome, because, again, we have had, um, a hundred, what'd you say, thirty-five vacancies? Uh, we have people who have credentials who are overlooked, so if, you know, let, let the, the public understand on the last, um, policy, you didn't want equity. And on this policy, you don't want a, a, um, baseline of minimum qualifications.
Dr. Win, I'm, um, if I may interrupt, please. I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying that this is not, that it's not right to have it. And it's just the way it's worded. I think we need to reword it through the third reading. I understand what you're saying and, and I can agree with you to a point, but it's just the way that it is worded, it seems to be in conflict. And my suggestion is for us to do it through a third read, to revise it accordingly to the way you want it to be put here.
Uh, what if we took, just took simultaneously out? That way, it gives us, if there is someone that is very qualified and is working on their certification, like we do with some of the pairs that are working on their, their teaching degree, we can hire them and ask for this, the waiver from the state to make sure that they are legal to teach. I, the simultaneously is what kind of catches me.
Simultaneously be the best. If you're taking, if you're accepting the minimum qualifications, but then you're saying they have to be the best.
That's correct, that they can have the minimum and still be the best. I think our, uh, HR person made a comment in, um, one of the, um, hmm, negotiation sessions that, and since Ms. Tishman is here to, to listen, um, she, she surely won't allow me to misquote her, that sometimes she wouldn't, she would rather not hire someone with a PhD. So they could be the best, and the minimum requirement is a bachelor's. And they could be better than someone with a doctorate, and Ms. Tishman made that comment. So we're all on the same page. What we want is the best.
I think we should go ahead and vote on this, and, um, if it's voted down, recommend new modification for wording.
I'm curious if, if Greg has any opinion to, I think, in understanding the, the intent to help us figure out the wording to make sure that capturing the intent, so whether this is it or whether it's something different. Greg, do you have any thoughts? I'm not an attorney, so I, in terms of legal wording, can you help us out?
I'm just trying to listen to everybody and I, I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to wordsmith that sentence, so it, it reads a little cleaner for everybody, because I think the intent is that, look, you want your applicants to meet the minimum qualifications. Heck, they have to meet the minimum qualifications if they're getting hired for, um, teaching positions and they, if they don't have a certification, they've got to get a waiver, so I, I think that becomes self-evident. I'm wondering if we break it into two separate sentences. Does that help the, the understanding?
And recognize, uh, Mr. Goheen, you already, um, gave the, the, um, stamp of approval far as it didn't being printed, so I now know with more conversation, um, where would you, where would you just put a period behind position and take out and, and start a new sentence with the?
That's kind of what I'm wondering. Um, applicants must meet the minimum qualifications, certifications for the position, period. And then, um, I don't know if it should be the, the, um, it's, it's like different from applicants. It should be the, you know, the, it should be the candidate selected for employment should be the best qualified based on education, training, and ability to fulfill posted requirements. Would that be, would that meet the intent of what you're trying to do?
Correct, because you are under the hiring category.
Right, right.
You would have to, um, so what's the process? Withdrawing this or voting this down and resubmitting?
I think, well, if your motion and Ms. Page's second, I believe, so we could amend, if you guys are both willing, we could amend the motion to wordsmith that sentence out and then have the motion.
You guys repeat it for Susan.
Yeah, I think it would read something to the effect of applicants must meet the minimum qualifications and certifications for the position, period.
Candidate. You said the candidate.
Yeah, the cand- candidate selected, or candidate units recommended for hire uh, should be the best qualified based upon education, training, experience, and the ability to build a position requirement, or the posted requirements of the position.
Should or shall?
Um, either way, shall, should, whatever you want to put it. Shall's fine.
You have to read it again for Susan.
So the second sentence would be the candidates, candidate, candidates recommended for hire uh, shall be the best qualified based on education, training, experience, and ability to fulfill the posted requirements of the position.
So therefore, we had the motion, it was seconded. And so.
I think, I think both Dr. Win and, uh, Ms. Page are okay with that amendment, then the motion.
amended motion.
Add it on, right.
amended motion. Ms. Page, are you okay with that?
Yeah, it'll work.
Okay, thank you. So therefore, are there any questions or comments? Okay, Susan, could we go ahead and vote, please? Roll call vote?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes, for the amended motion.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lo- uh, Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brown and Page.
Yes.
Valdenia win.
Valdenia win, yes.
And Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next one?
That's at the Kansas City Board of Education, except for second read proposed changes to board policy G A C C A nepotism as submitted by K A S B, reviewed by legal counsel and is recommended by myself superintendent of schools.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Someone, it's been moved and seconded that we accept proposed changes to board policy G A C C A nepotism. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brown and Page.
Wanda Brown and Page, yes.
Valdenia win.
Valdenia win, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one?
That's at the Kansas City Board of Education, except for first read and potentially modification by board members proposed changes to board policy G A H B, political activities as submitted by K A S B, reviewed by legal counsel and is recommended by myself superintendent of schools.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept changes to board policy G A H B, political activities. Are there any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brown and Page.
Wanda Brown and Page, yes.
Valdenia win.
Valdenia win, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're now ready to, to go into executive session. I need a motion for the board to recess to executive session, um, at nine thirty-one. And we're going for ten minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved on the Kansas Open Meetings Act. How many minutes, uh, the board will return to open session at, um, nine forty, nine forty-one, with, uh, no action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go to executive session. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brown and Page.
Yes.
Valdenia win. Already went. And Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we will resume. We come out. So moved. It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. All those in favor say, uh, Susan, roll call.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries, Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brown and Page, Valdenia win, Stacy Yeager.
A C S.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, I don't have the information that's before me. Susan, could you read it for our next executive session, please?
Um, yes, um, need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at, what's it, nine forty-five for twenty minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the party or parties involved under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session at ten oh five with no action to follow.
So moved.
And moved.
Second.
And seconded. We will go into our meeting.
We have to do roll call.
No.
Um, Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy, uh, Yeager.
Stacy Yeager, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Could I get a motion that we, that we, for my meeting?
So moved.
Second.
We're moving the seconded. Dr. Yeager, he hasn't called. Hold on just a moment. It's ringing now. It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. All those, roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
Stacy, yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We, I need a motion, we'll need twenty additional minutes for our executive session.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Stacy Yeager.
A C S.
That's twenty.
Twenty minutes and it is ten oh seven, so at ten twenty-seven, we'll be back.
Okay.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to need twenty more minutes. Could I make a motion? Could I get a motion that we resume our meeting, please?
So moved.
I needed seconded, please. Need to second.
Second, I was on mute, second.
It's been moved and seconded that we go back into our meeting. Susan?
Maxine Drew.
Yes.
Uh, Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
A C S.
We're going to need twenty additional minutes for the executive session, starting at ten thirty and ending at ten fifty. Could I get a motion, please? It's been seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda?
I think she left.
Okay, well, we'll just say yes. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Okay, motion passes, so twenty minutes.
Thank you.
Do you need Yolanda to come?
No, it's good.
Okay, we're back. Could I get, could I get a motion that we resume?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we resume our meeting. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
Stacy, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Could you read the next executive session, please, so that we?
Uh, I need a motion for the board to recess into executive session at, is it ten fifty-two for ten minutes to discuss the superintendent's evaluation pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. Board will return to open session at eleven oh two with no action to follow.
So moved.
I can't.
It's been moved and seconded that we will go into our meeting and return at eleven oh two. Roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
A C S.
Uh, motion passes.
I beat you, Greg.
Barely. You're you're more experienced at Zoom meetings than I am.
Trying to be the first one, I beat you, Yolanda.
Yes, Randy.
Did I get a Zoom meeting?
So moved.
I can't.
It's been moved and seconded that we go back into our meeting. Roll call vote.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
A C S.
Uh, motion passes.
Thank you. Susan, do we have another executive session?
We actually have two more.
All right.
We have the one um that's the attorney-client, which is next. And then the one that Valdivia added for the HR report.
Okay, let's do the the next one. And then I'll find out how many minutes she needs for.
This one is ten, I believe.
Uh, the Kansas City Board of Ed-
We won't, we won't need more than ten, so we should be good.
Okay.
Uh, the Kansas City Board of Education recessed to executive session at eleven oh five for ten minutes to consult with the board attorney on matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under the Kansas Open Meetings Act. The board will return to open session at um eleven fifteen with no action to follow.
So moved.
Second.
It moved and seconded that we go to a meeting for ten minutes with no action to follow in the executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Stacy Ager.
A C S.
Motion passes.
So you want to get back?
Valina Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
We're waiting on Yolanda to come in.
Or Stacy.
Yolanda's here.
Okay.
Okay, so we have one more executive session and Dr. Win uh will let us know how many minutes we need for it.
Let's say um fifteen. So Greg, you need to provide the language for Susan.
Yes, this would be uh mostly going to executive session at the two, uh, for the personnel exception uh to address uh privacy rights of non-elected personnel with uh potential action to follow, I presume.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded that we go into executive session for fifteen minutes with no action to follow.
Uh, with that, with that.
With potential action to follow, thank you. Okay, Susan, could you?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Uh, Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Uh, Valdivia Nguyen.
Valdivia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager. Motion passes.
Thank you, we will be back in session at eleven twenty-eight. May I get a motion that we resume in our meeting, please?
So moved.
I can't.
It's been seconded that we go in our meeting. Could, uh, roll call vote, please?
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
They haven't gotten back yet.
Valdivia Nguyen.
Yes.
Stacy Ager. Motion passes.
May I get a motion that we accept the HR report?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the HR report. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Have to find it. Yes, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Valdivia Nguyen.
Valdivia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Ager.
A C S.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Communications, Dr. Faust, is there anything you would like to add? You're on mute, Dr. Faust.
We're coming down the slide for the um, the end of the school year, wrapping it up. And of course, no one would have ever thought would be wrapping it up virtually. But, you know, the the teachers, staff, um food nutrition, everyone is just doing a a great job of of what they're doing. We're thankful for our students and of course, our our parents for them being our um teachers assistants um while they are at home. I know um it is a different uh place for them and we're just thankful for it. And we just know that um our students and our um community will be in a different place. We are also um putting together a task force for the re-entry. And so some of you may be contacted or asked to join the the task force um to get your opinion on um this re-entry plan. We're doing some things to, how do we bring back the individuals and what that will look like? So stay tuned as um we'll be reaching out to you.
Thank you. Just like to say thank you to the board members. We will continually work collectively together and do what we have to do to serve not only our community, our parents, but our students as well. Is there anyone else who would like to have any?
Uh, Dr. Faust, I got an email, and I'm sure you resolved it by now. Central middle school computers had not been distributed.
That computer or?
Computers.
Okay, if you can afford it, we can check into it, but, because we've said we.
Okay, we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So therefore, I make the motion that we are going to adjourn. The meeting is over.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Do well.
You.